One, welcome to the Gostown School Board meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order at exactly 7:00 PM. Before we get into our meeting, I do need to read some executive order. Consistent with Governor Sununu's Executive Order 2020-04, Emergency Order Number 12, Board Members Will Be Attending The Meeting Remotely. The public is invited to call 603-766-5646. Enter participant code 685562. If you wish to make a public comment at the beginning of the meeting, please wait for the chair's instructions and then press star nine. Your microphone will be unmuted, and you will be directed to state your name and address prior to making your public comment. You can also email your public comment to Denise.Moran@SAU19.org prior to 4 o'clock this afternoon. In the subject line, you would indicate today's date, Gostown School Board meeting, and public comment. Please include your name and address and limit your comments to no more than 500 words. The board reserves the right to read your public comment during the meeting. However, any public comment will be included in the official meeting minutes. The board meeting can be viewed on GTV16 On Demand and will also be streamed live on the GTV YouTube channel. I do need to take attendance. So when I call your name, if you can just stay here, and if you're alone, I will start with school board members. We have Reda Chaffee.
Here and alone.
Dan Cludier.
I'm here, and oh, I guess, nope, Sergeant is still here. That's my dog, sorry.
That's all right. I see Tim Stetson. Jared Talbot.
Present and alone.
Janelle O'Brien.
Here and alone.
Ginny McKinnon.
Here and alone.
And I am Heather Trapez. I am here and alone. We have our student rep, Caleb Hagner.
Here and alone.
I'm gonna go with our administrators next. We have Superintendent Brian Balki.
Good evening, present and alone.
Thank you. Business Administrator Scott Gross.
Here and in my office of the SAU. Denise, next door.
Thank you. Business Administrator Assistant Laura Taylor.
Here and alone.
And we have a staff accountant, Heather Kelly.
Here and alone.
And our executive assistant Denise Moran. Oh, I think she said here and alone.
Here and alone, yeah.
Thanks Denise. We also have some special guests. We have state reps, Senator Lou DeLisandro.
I bid my homie Manchester, and I'm alone.
Thank you. Joe Alexander.
Here in Gostown, I'm alone.
And our auditor Cheryl Pratt.
Here and alone.
Did I miss anyone? No. Okay, so if we can stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, Scott, do you have a flag? I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance, that's my flag, of the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. So just to remind, especially my board members, we're on Zoom again. So if you have a question or a comment, there's a little icon on the bottom that has a waved hand, or just wave your hand in front of the camera, so I know you have a question or a comment. Before we get on to our board meeting tonight, like I said, we have some special guests. We have our auditor, who's going to do a presentation, and we have some of our state reps who are here to talk to us. So before we get into the rest of the agenda, we're going to start with our auditor. Brian, did you have anything to add to that before I?
Yeah, I'd just like to, again, welcome Cheryl Pratt, who's going to be presenting this evening, and I'd like to thank Laura and Heather for also being with us this evening. So thanks for taking time out of your evening to be with us. So without further ado, I will hand it off to Cheryl. Welcome.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for having me tonight. I want to first start off by saying thank you to Scott and Laura, Heather, and the staff for helping us get through this year's audit. It was a little different, but we were able to do it onsite, which was fantastic, whereas a lot of other audits we've had to perform, it's been very difficult, and we have to do a lot of collection of records and bring them back to the office. So again, we really appreciate everyone's efforts during this audit. I want to go start with the opinion letter, which is the first document that you're going to be seeing. This is the Independent Auditor's Report. And there's a, this, in this report, about three quarters of the way down on the page, there is the summary of opinions. And this is the same as last year. You did receive an adverse opinion on your governmental activities, and that is because you have not yet had a valuation study for the school district's portion, the employer portion, of the other post-employment benefit liability and deferrals. You did receive the unmodified, or what we used to call clean opinions, on your major general fund, Capital Project Fund, and the aggregate remaining funds, which are all of the other small special revenue funds, being the grants, the food service, and this year, the Student Activity Funds. On the next page of this opinion letter, you will note that there was a change in accounting principle. We did proceed with, or I should say you proceeded with GASB Statement 84, which is how Student Activity Funds are now determined to be reported. And because your Student Activity Funds are, the administration determines how those monies are to be spent for the kids, they now have to be reported no longer as agency funds, but actually as a special revenue fund of the district. And we're gonna, I'll go into that a little more in detail as we go. But your Student Activity Funds were split between, there are, there was about $6,886 worth of district-related activities, being administration accounts that were in the Student Activity Funds. And then the remaining pool of Student Activity Funds are your school accounts, and those are now being shown as a special revenue fund. Now Scott, if we could please go to Exhibit C1. This is your balance sheet for the year. Your general fund is always shown as a major fund, and this year, the Capital Project Fund was also reported as a major fund. The reason being is that the liabilities were material enough to categorize it as a major fund. Though it does report a deficit balance for the year, there was a note disclosure in Note 2 to state that the funding was to, would be made up in 2021 through, I believe, grant aid. So with the Capital Project Fund, because the project budget is for the life of the project, that, that project can be reported as soon as seven days from the vote of the town or the school district has been made. You can legally go ahead and start a Capital Project Fund. So here, we do show the deficit balance at year end, but it was, the funding was received in 2021.
And Cheryl, if I could just interject there, and Laura, if you want to also chime in, this was the kindergarten modular project. When that got voted in in March, we are allowed, we were allowed to start that project, such as ordering the modular, starting to do the site work, and that's what, that's what that is all about. So we didn't have to wait until July 1, and we had talked about this last year after the vote was passed. So, thank you.
Also, in the, if you turn your attention to the first column on the left, the general fund, you will see that you did, at the end of the year, you had $4.2 million in assets, the largest of those being the cash. You had $1.2 million in liabilities, and then you had fund balance of $3,037,956. The final, the last call, or the next-to-last column on this page, the other governmental funds, we can go into in further detail in just a minute. Scott, can we please go to Note 15? Note 15 does break down your fund balance at the end of the year. And in the general fund, I did want to pay special attention to your unassigned fund balance. That's made up of two components. The total unassigned was $2.3 million. However, it is broken down by the unassigned retained, that you can retain in accordance with RSA 1984B, which was $652,000. And then your unassigned fund balance that could be used to reduce the tax rate was $1,721,432. Also, in the general fund, you will see the assigned fund balance right up above for encumbrances of $255,842, and then the district's portion of the Student Activity Funds. Above that are the committed funds. So you had a balance in your expendable trust funds that have to be reported with the general fund in accordance with GASB 54. That, the expendable with the 102678, and then there were voted appropriations in March 2020 for the 2021 school year that was to use 200,000 of fund balance to be carried forward. Finally, at the top, we have non-spendable balance, which is made up of the inventory and prepaid items in the general fund. The next column is your Capital Project Fund, that again shows the deficit, which will be removed in 2021, and then your other non-major governmental fund balances. All right, Scott, could we please go to Schedule 1? All right, Schedule 1 is your general fund budget to actual for your revenues. You will notice here that you did receive $728,751 more in revenue than what was anticipated. A large portion of that came from tuition. You received $463,537 more in tuition revenue than what you anticipated. On Schedule 2, this is a comparison of your budget to actual for your expenditures. Now, this also factors in encumbrances that are carried forward and added to the budget for the, for the year under audit, and compares that to the expenditures minus encumbrances at the end of June 30, 2020, that will be carried forward into the new year. It's budget that was anticipated to be spent on various items, but the expenditure didn't, wasn't incurred prior to June 30, so that amount gets carried forward. The total encumbrances carried forward into 2021, as you will see in the fourth column total, was $255,842. You'll also note in, on the last column at the bottom, the budget was underspent by a total of $1,485,008.
Cheryl, if I just could, just a couple of housekeeping things. Terry and Ellen joined the meeting at about 7:10. For the, for, that's for the, for Denise's benefit, and I want to welcome State Rep Claire Rouillard as well. And just for those of you who have just gotten on the call, when I added bookmarks to the audit report, it kind of made some of these things funky. On your reports, it looks perfectly fine, on all the published reports. But when I converted it, you know, on Friday, I noticed that a couple of these things, like right here for expenditures, it kind of converted it funky. So just wanted to let you know. Thanks Cheryl.
Thank you. On Schedule 3, you will see that the, we, under the 1920 budget summary, we take that revenue surplus from Schedule 1, and we add it to the unexpended balance of appropriations that we just mentioned on Schedule 2 for an overall budget surplus of $2,213,759. Now, this, I think, is one of the most important schedules in the report, because it shows you where you started the year with unassigned fund balance and where you ended the year. So at the beginning of the year, so you started with $1,844,331, and there was use of the unassigned fund balance from the prior year plus the unassigned fund balance appropriated for 1920. That is taken away from the beginning fund balance. Then we add in the budget surplus, and then we have to make an adjustment for the change in non-spendable balance from prior year to current year. So the non-spendable fund balance increased in 1920 over 1819 by $31,451, leaving you with that total unassigned fund balance of $2,003,73432. That number is then further broken down, as was noted in Note 15, for the $652,000 that is set aside, unassigned retained, and then the balance is your unassigned that can be returned to reduce the taxes.
Cheryl, I just wanted, just for the school board members' benefit, and also we have a few state reps and Senator DeLisandro on the phone. Due to COVID-19, as you knew, you know, just to refresh everyone's memory, we did see considerable savings in budget lines. Most notably was, let's say, the areas of, say, transportation, supplies. There's a lot of things, although we did spend money on technology, et cetera, we did see probably a good $500,000 or $600,000 at least of cost savings in the budget, which we used to then offset the tax rate. So just wanted to let the folks know that.
All right. Now, if we could go to Schedule 4, please.
And again, just for housekeeping, I want to welcome State Rep Mike Gunske, who just joined us.
Hello, everybody. Hello, good evening.
Hi, Mike.
All right, Schedule 4. Actually, the total of this schedule, the total column, is reported on Exhibit C1, which was the first exhibit that we looked at. This gives you a breakdown of the balance sheet of all your other special revenue funds, and you have a permanent trust fund that is reported as part of the district. So this gives you an idea of what other funds you have, the balance sheet and the balances in them. Food service, you did end up, and that's in the second column, you did have a restricted fund balance at the end of the year of $115,579. And from what I have seen, that's actually very good. Unfortunately, a lot of food service programs did take a hit this year, and I have seen a lot of food service programs carrying forward a deficit into the new year. But, and then the other thing that is new to this schedule is the Student Activity Funds. So the Student Activity Funds no longer are reported as a fiduciary or agency fund. They are now reported as a special revenue fund. And you will see that this is the portion that is raised strictly by the kids for the kids. This is the class accounts. The, you know, the Spanish clubs, the, all the different clubs that the kids raise money for. These are those funds. So now what we do with, in accordance with GASB 84, is that the fund balance related to these funds is reported as assigned for student purposes. So that is something new that you're not used to seeing. If you compared this report to last year's report, you would see them as Exhibit, or Exhibit E in the report, audit report. On Page 5, I'm sorry, Schedule 5, this is your statement of, or your schedule of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for each of those non-major funds. Again, you will notice that the Student Activity Funds took, raised $560,344, and they spent $581,565. They started the year with a $184,456 balance and ended the year with $163,235. Due to the nature of your Student Activity Funds and the volume of cash that's collected, we do, every year, perform extended procedures on your Student Activity Funds. We do a lot of additional testing of deposits to make sure they're deposited intact and are made timely. And then also with your expenditures, we do do a lot of testing, looking for unusual items and verifying that there is proper supporting documentation to go with those, and that they are properly documented and are appropriate for our Student Activity Fund. Scott, did we put in Schedules 6 and 7?
I don't think so.
Okay. Just as a point, in your, in your audit report, you can go to Schedules 6 and 7 and see the breakdown by individual activity fund of what the balance in each activity fund is, both balance sheet and income statement.
By school.
By school.
Yeah, but not necessarily by individual classroom clubs or things of that nature, just by school.
Correct.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Even though there's only like $34,720, there's something called a permanent fund?
Yes.
What is that?
That is a trust fund that the town's trustees of trust funds have custody of, but it is for the benefit of the school district.
That is, is Scott, is that the, the Bartlett?
No.
No, it's something different.
It's the Mildred Stark Library Funds?
Yeah.
Are those scholarships?
No, it's a library fund.
Not a lot of activity.
No. And like with these, with your permanent funds, you can only expend the interest income in the, in the, in the account. You can't spend anything other than the interest.
Okay, that makes sense.
So that's probably why you're seeing very little. Without getting it in front of me, my guess is probably you're spent, you may have a little more in interest income, but not a lot. This could probably, the bulk of this, well, actually, I can tell you. On Schedule 4, Scott, can we just go back one page?
Sure.
If we go to that permanent column, we have, you'll see the non-spendable fund balance of $81,282. That is actually the principal for the trust. So that portion can never be expended. But there is $3,438 worth of interest income that has been earned that could be used, if needed, by the library, the school library.
And just for giggles, it gets categorized and intergovernmental, because we don't have physical possession.
Correct. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then Scott, can we go to Schedule 1 in the back of the report? Okay, this is just the summary. Because you receive and expend over $750,000 in this period, and you received and expended $1,289,948, we have to perform what we call is a single audit. We have to test those federal monies that you've received to make sure that you are in compliance with the federal requirements of those grants. And as you can see on this summary page, that you did receive the unmodified opinion on the financial piece, with the exception of the adverse on the governmental activities, as we had gone over in the opinion letter. There were no significant deficiencies in the financial reporting, and there were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses reported in the federal awards. So I must applaud you. I think when we started doing this a few years ago, you actually had some findings. And this year, as you can see on the bottom of that schedule, there were no findings to be reported. So that's in, in large part, to all your efforts that you have, you've taken the findings that we have reported in the prior years, and you have implemented changes, and you've corrected those findings. So bravo to you for, for having taken those steps and eliminating all those material weaknesses and significant deficiencies.
So Cheryl, I'd be remiss if I got Laura on the phone here, and Laura takes care of the audit, and Heather helped out this year. But I think, considering that, just in case you folks didn't know, Laura had a baby, and she did all of this, like, seven, eight, and almost like to term. So she did, she did all that work before her daughter was born. So I want to congratulate Laura on the baby, and also thank her for doing all this work, literally, up until the due date. It was crazy, but she did.
Thank you. We had a couple scares, but we made it.
It was all deep breathing exercises. We got through it, so.
Even for us auditors, we're a little nervous there, but she did, she did a great job.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Cheryl on our audit? Comments, questions?
If, oh, I didn't raise my hand.
That's all right, Dan, go ahead.
So I'm looking at the first schedule we looked at, and the total cash on hand was about, if I remember correctly, about 3.4 million? Is that appropriate?
Yes, because again, you got that money on hand to pay. For example, you did have liabilities of $1.2 million at June 30. So immediately, that, a lot of that 3.4 million was used to eliminate those liabilities at the end of the year. And you did have the money going forward to cover your expenditures as you were going into the new year. There's oftentimes, I've seen several school districts, even recently, in this period that we're auditing, that actually had to receive advanced funding from the towns, because they didn't have enough cash on hand in some cases. So, so that, so that's good that you have that money. You don't have to go and ask the town for more money.
Dan, was that all? Because I know Jared had a question as well.
I'm fine, thank you.
All right, Jared, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to circle back with the unreserved fund balance that was listed. I think I saw the number of $1.7 million for the unassigned fund balance. Was that after the $200,000 was taken for the Capital Reserve Fund?
Yes. If we could go back to Note 15, Scott?
One second.
Well, Scott's bringing that up. I'll just follow up with my question. Is a $1.9 million unreserved fund balance typical for the budget that we have for the school system? Is that the right quote-unquote percentage or within that range?
You, I don't know the percentage off the top of my head. But it all depends. I mean, because you did have, you did have that budget surplus, that's certainly a good amount. Because of COVID, you didn't expend, you had three months, basically, of time where you weren't incurring a lot of expense for expenditure, things like food, maybe, or teachers, substitutes. So it's a hard one to call, but it's certainly, it's, 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 I always look at it as you have fun, but it's better to have that type of fund balance than no fund balance at all.
Maybe if I ask my question a different way. What would be the appropriate percentage of an unreserved fund balance against?
Against the total budget for a school system?
Well, with that, you you can retain two and a half percent, which is the six hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. Of the district assessment. In theory, you you can, you're not, you're not allowed to retain fund balance other than the two and a half percent. It's anything you have left over has to go to reduce the tax rate. In the town, you can retain it and in a town, a healthy, what they recommend is anywhere between eight. And seventeen percent retaining to carry forward.
So so just, I guess I'm I'm not getting where I want to go. The actual specific line item for the unreserved fund balance minus the CRF, minus the emergency two point five percent. What is a good percentage to have uh, as a kind of standard or vision that we should be shooting for? It should be zero to five percent of our total budget that we want to give back to the taxpayers? What what would be the typical amount that it should be?
Hmm, you know, that's a good question. Um, I don't think I've ever been asked that question because typically, yeah, anything that's left over. Um, I guess, you know, you don't want, it's hard to say, but you. You always want to run a tight budget. You don't wanna certainly overexpend the budget. But you don't want to have a lot of money left over in the budget. Um, because then you're not budgeting, either way, you're you're, you've got a budget properly. I think one of the first comments that we had was that the budget may had have had some item, had some extra fluff in it. And it was too much and you have worked hard to bring your budget down, so you are returning. Um, around a million to, you know, maybe one point seven million a year. What I what I typically see of a district your size is anywhere between one and a half to two million that ends up getting returned. Um, on an annual basis.
Thank you.
All right, I saw Alan's hand. Go ahead, Alan. You're muted.
Yeah, I undid myself. What percent of our budget is the one point seven million? You know, I don't have a calculator in front of me. Scott, do you have that?
Yeah, hold on.
Well, Scott does that. Um, I'd like to follow up on Jared. In past years, either the business administrator or superintendent would tell us. Uh, or give us a number that, you know, if you're within this percent of your budget, you're doing very well by the end of the year. Uh, when you have that left over. Can either Scott or Brian, do either of you recall what you used to tell us with regard to? You know, if it's only one percent of the total budget, I mean, think about it, we've got a forty something million dollar budget.
Yeah, so um, if I could interject there, um, so this particular year. Uh, it was four percent that was remaining and my goal, I shoot for two, around two and a half percent. Um, and that's what most business administrators, that's kind of like the target. And I think the reason why it went to four was because of COVID, so uh, but ordinarily, you know, we we shoot for that. And you know, some of the, some of the reasons are you come up with unanticipated, unanticipated expenses. Whether it be a special ed, which almost happens every year. Um, but that's generally speaking, the target. So when when Cheryl was asked that question before. Um, I think that's very, I think the response is accurate in in terms of what my peers are doing across the state. So uh, this year was a little bit more than usual and that was just simply because of savings in a lot of areas. Because we we didn't incur the expenses the last three months of the year.
And that's, and we are seeing that, you know, people's fun, the the district's fund balances have gone up because of that. It's very common throughout the state and we audit over eighty school districts, so it is very common.
And I think it also, we have to kind of go back to the notion that um, there's a couple of things Cheryl just wanted to bring to everyone's attention. There was recent legislation passed last year of uh, by our esteemed colleagues here. Folks on the call as well as Senator DeLisandro to increase that two point five to five percent. So that has, that has changed um, over the, over the last year, but that two and a half percent. Um, it liquidates. If it's not spent, if it's not used by June thirtieth, it liquidates, it goes to tax relief. Unless the board, which is why you take a vote in June of every year, to to determine how much money you're going to set aside in that contingency fund. So um, and again, we've we've had to use that fund and, you know, a couple of times over the last, you know, five or six years. So most notably with the the flooring at the high school, so um, hopefully that answers some of the questions.
Thank you, Scott. Does anybody else have anything for Cheryl before we say good night? Brian, did you want to say anything?
I just wanted to thank Cheryl for um, again, a a very comprehensive audit as always. We appreciate it. And certainly all the hard work from um, from Laura and from Heather and and the team that went into this and thank you for being with us tonight.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you very much.
And for those that are watching on TV, we will post um, the audit uh, on the website. And somebody who wants to take a look at it is free to do so and board members, you you have uh, electronic copies and hard copies here if you haven't gotten them already. Okay?
Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Cheryl. Good night.
Bye bye.
All right, so the next is talking with our senator and some state reps. Brian, Scott, did you want to start that off? I know we had questions for them.
Yeah, I'll just um, begin by by welcoming and and thanking Senator DeLisandro and all of our reps for being with us. Uh, this evening and in general, we we like to stay in close contact with all of you. Certainly, there are a lot of bills that pertain to education that go uh, through all the committees and ultimately you all have votes on. So we thought we'd just target a few areas um, or topics that are of interest, certainly to the school district. The first being adequacy and there's certainly an awful lot to talk about there. The second being building aid, that's a a continuous um, area of focus for us. And the third being kindergarten and the prospect of full-day kindergarten. Um, those would really be probably the three biggest topics um, that we wanted to target. And one thing I'd like to um, just share with the board and with our members of the general court. I think everyone's largely aware that there was a commission on school funding. And this was um, enacted by the um, by the legislative process. And there were four key findings in the report that I think are of note. The first is that the current funding formula is inequitable. The second is targeting aid to vulnerable communities can help advance educational equity. The third, shift to an outcomes-based model that directs funding to communities who are most in need. And the fourth is the commission does not propose any new taxes, but considers a broader statewide property tax. Um, those four bullet points as a summary were um, put together from the School Boards Association. So board members, you've heard me share that information before, but um, Heather, I thought we'd just start by let's talk about adequacy in general. And um, Scott, if you want to chime in as we get going, but uh, I think we're here to listen. We're here to certainly answer any questions that our distinguished state reps may have. But I'll start there by just in general, opening it up for anyone who'd like to comment about adequacy.
Ryan, can I just lay some groundwork, if I may, this, it might put some, put it to some context for for both the senator and 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 the state reps. So in terms of adequacy, this is like the lion's share of revenue that we get outside of the local property tax. And um, before we we were, we were on the call, Joe and and Lou were. Uh, we were, we were talking and and it was interesting, I pulled the town report from from ten years ago. And it was interesting in the sense that our New Hampshire state adequacy and the SWEPT, which is the their statewide property tax. Uh, back in two thousand and ten was about ten point five million dollars combined. Last year, so fast forward ten years, um, that number was a little over ten point nine. So it increased, you know, about four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars over a decade. So a five percent increase in in what we call state-type funding. Um, obviously, we all know that uh, so currently we're looking at about thirty-eight hundred and change is what we get per pupil. And for Gothstown, our our average is uh, like low fourteen, so it's like fourteen thousand one hundred and change. Is our cost per pupil where the state's average is over sixteen and a half thousand dollars per pupil. So we're we're sixteen percent lower than the state average. But I think for our state reps and and for our state senator, you know, the the biggest challenge that that we have. Uh, collectively as a school district is the sense that more and more of the burden is on the local taxpayer. Um, and in doing so, as you can see, I mean, five percent increase over a ten-year period, we all know our budget went up by more, by more than that. Um, so I I guess, you know, for me, you know, my question is that our. What what can or what can your position be in terms of when when we look at state funding? How we can relieve the local tax burden in a way, because right now it seems like it's ever, ever, you know, more on them. The local, the local taxpayer versus the state.
Someone like to answer?
Well. Okay, I think the point's well taken. Obviously, uh. We had the, we had the real transition in how we fund education in nineteen ninety-nine. When we actually created the adequate education formula, that was done during the Shaheed administration. This thing's been tampered with uh, every two years since then. It will be tampered tampered with again. Because as as you articulated, the commission has made a number of suggestions. Those suggestions will go to the legislature this year, uh, and there will be some, there will be some changes. Will the changes be catastrophic? I don't know. Uh, that that really depends upon the will of the Education Committee in the House and the Education Committee in the Senate. And in finality, the budget that will be prepared by the Finance Committee in both the House and the Senate. You know, one of the things that I've articulated over the years has been targeting of aid. And the aid should go to the most needy communities. Uh, that's that's always been on my mind and it's it's, it's something that uh. I've fought for over the years and uh. It's something that's going to have to happen one of the, one of these days because the poorer get poorer and and the richer get getting richer. And the the communities that really don't have the need get more. And that's, that's been the case throughout this whole situation. That's got to be taken care of. Uh, they spent a half a million dollars on this commission to decide what to do. The commission made a report, the report will be uh, submitted to the legislature. The governor will have to come up with his budget and uh, we'll, we'll, we'll move forward, but that's, that's the groundwork as we see. When Lynch was uh, governor, we did something that we have never done in in the past, we bonded building aid. First time we'd ever bonded building aid. We always uh, used building aid on a pay-as-you-go basis. The bonds are still out there, the bonds will remain in place until twenty thirty, that's when those bonds will be paid off. Uh, and uh, this year, you you, Gothstown will get the last part of its building aid. Uh, the buildings that have been, did then, I I had the legislature do some research. And Gothstown is slated to receive two hundred and sixty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And two hundred and sixty-two thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars in fiscal year twenty-two. For the final building and uh, building aid payments on on the high school. So that that'll, that'll be the end of 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 that particular uh, situation. Uh, adequacy, uh, and I'll submit to you uh, Scott, and you could share it with other members of of the board. The adequate education aid summary as we as we move forward, as we see it. Uh, and you will be getting less money uh, in in twenty uh, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. You know that with with, we've had, we've had this conversation. Uh, and uh, that's reduction to the number of students, that that plays, that plays a role. And of course, the the ingredients are free and reduced price lunch, English language learners, special education and the third grade reading. Those are the components of the formula, you know, as as we speak. So that's going to have to be uh, looked at, but what we're going to see throughout the state is a reduction of the school population. That's supposed to be, that is supposed to continue for about ten years. It, we're scheduled to go to full-day kindergarten in twenty twenty. Uh, Mr. Superintendent, are we going to do that?
Well, um, so Senator, this is one of the topics that I feel very strongly about. And and I do think the educational outcomes for kids are really clear when it comes to full-day kindergarten. The struggles that we have is if the minimum standards were changed to include full-day kindergarten. We would be short um, in anticipated six classrooms that we would need, plus the staffing associated with those classrooms. So for for the Gothstown School District, full-day kindergarten um, essentially would either require um, a bond. A reconfiguration of how we're staffing. Um, we really would have to look at increasing our available space as well as the costs associated with that. And um, in terms of adequacy, I I do have a lot of concern, Senator, that we could be a community that would essentially miss out. Because if uh, if we look at this recommendation of shifting to an outcomes-based model. That directs funding to communities most in need, that seems to indicate. That if you have low student achievement outcomes, that you are potentially as a community eligible for increased revenue. Um, unfortunately for us from this, this is a nice problem to have, but we have high achievements. We actually um, outperform our demographic and uh, we we really do well with outcomes. So we could potentially be short, um, shorted there. And in terms of targeting aid to vulnerable communities, I'm not entirely sure what particular metrics they would look at. Um, I would submit that looking at the equalized assessed property evaluation for each student would be a really good place to start. The average for the state is around a million and we're considerably under that. Um, but there's certainly going to be a lot to unpack and um, you know, in general, the senators, right? Our free and reduced numbers are down, that uh, will hurt our adequacy. I've uh, shared that with the board um, for quite a while that we're concerned about that. But you know, fundamentally, we it we're, we struggle in that we have a very low per pupil cost. Which means that we're doing this for a very reasonable price, but unfortunately, because of the lack of a commercial tax base. Um, we end up having the majority of that burden is carried by local property taxpayers. As well as the burden of the statewide educational property tax, which of course, as we know, is money that is raised locally and retained locally. And it's identified as state aid, even though it's coming exclusively from local property taxes. So you know, we we struggle um, every year with our budget. And uh, we we do have a couple of budget committee members here. And in general, um, even though we're we're maintaining our costs and have a low per pupil cost. The burden just continues to be overwhelming for a community like Gothstown and and that's a real struggle for us, um, as you know, Senator.
Sure, and I think your point's well taken. It's counterintuitive to say, to say that if you're doing, if you're doing well, which you are. You do well, you test well, you you have a, you have good education outcomes, that that would be a penalty.
Right.
But the a program, and that's counterintuitive, it's got, it sounds uh, like we shouldn't, we shouldn't do anything like that. There are going to be a lot of things discussed, uh, and and I, and I think uh, one of, one of, one of the things that that. That has to be, that has to be considered is how this part of money is actually distributed. You know, and and uh. The court case says that every student is entitled to a free and appropriate education. A free and appropriate education, that's based on the constitutional question that was brought forth. And we have to, the legislature has to deal with it uh, on an, on an annual basis. And when you think of some of the things the legislature has, I don't know, when the Republicans have been in control, when the Democrats have have been in control. They've played with this formula. And and Brian, the 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 key issue with the statewide property tax was donor towns.
Yep.
And that became, that became a nasty word. That's why all of the money is uh, that's raised is retained at the local level. There's a number that's in place. The tax never exceeds a number. The only variation is is the assessment. You'll get assessed at one rate one year and another rate another year, but the number will always be the same. The number never changes. The assessment's over, you retain it, you retain it at the, at the local level.
Senator, this is, this is Scott. I, I wanted to just make a a plug for you and for the state reps on the call. And and the superintendent mentioned this, but I. And and the superintendent mentioned this, but I want, I I I don't think, I just think it needs to be stated again. Uh, the free and reduced lunch piece of adequacy. So we have a formula and the free and reduced lunch counts for each school district is put into that formula. And because of the federal legislation in terms of CARES Act and all the waivers from the USDA, we have pretty much given all kids in New Hampshire free lunches and breakfasts uh through the whole, for the whole entire school year. And what that's translated in, and this is not just Goffstown, but all across the state, uh, free and reduced numbers, the folks that have, the families that have, that have actually filled out the application, who qualify even, they are not filling this thing out. And because of that, we're down, again, not just Goffstown, all districts, twenty five percent in terms of those numbers. So there's a need for a legislative fix, and maybe that fix is to use numbers from the year prior. If we don't fix that, if there's no fix legislatively, Goffstown's gonna lose a couple hundred thousand dollars, and so is every other state.
Yeah, I mean, everyone takes.
Not just the Goffstown issue, but that is the one big ask that I have.
Well, and I, and that's, that's really legitimate, and I think the members of the board uh should recognize that, that that because of the situation, you have to look back. You, there should be a look back provision that says when they did sign up, you you'll get the, you'll get that same amount. That's a concern, because free and reduce is is a very, as you say, it's a very significant part uh of of the formula. And because of the of the situation, everybody was getting it, and as a result, uh, it, the the numbers don't, the numbers don't work out. That's gotta be looked at. I think we go, I've heard uh from my colleagues that that's something that uh that people are gonna look at uh the Department of the Committee on Education in in the Senate.
And Senator, the the other thing that I I also wanted to say thank you to our reps and to you. You know, last year, when we got one point three five million dollars in in that aid, um, that that largely funded our kindergarten modular. Um, so I don't, I don't wanna be, you know, you know, I wanna be fair and thank you. And I know that I had conversations with you, uh, Senator, and I had long conversations with Representative Alexander about this. And he did get you on the actual amount, by the way, but but that, that being said, that was a massive help. I mean, so we're looking at four more classrooms um at our Glen Lake Kindergarten School, simply because of the state legislature and the Senate, uh, you know, and the governor approved that. So I I can't thank you enough, you know, for that. It was a project that was long overdue and it's helping us, especially now with with COVID. So I wanted to at least say thank you for that.
Well, thank you and thank the legend, the the members of the House. I I've talked to the superintendent. We had a number of conversations about this, yeah. Uh, during that time period, we we went to the school, we looked at the site and looked where these portables were 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 going to be placed. Uh, a ve- very meaningful, and I, and I think ob- obviously, from an educational standpoint, it is so important to have kindergarten. I mean, it's it's really important at preschool, but to have kindergarten. I think we talked at length about what's happened to the students in terms of their performance, those that had kindergarten, those that didn't have kindergarten, and the differential that that has taken place as far as educational learning uh uh is concerned. Uh, a very, a very meaningful, very meaningful situation. I I served on on the uh, on the Gopher Committee uh for the distribution of the one point two five billion dollars uh that 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 the governor had, you know, unilateral control over, and we were able to get money from the schools. We were able to to get the two hundred dollars per student. It should have been more than that, but we were able to get two hundred. That helped. Uh, but remember that we we were in a a situation unparalleled in the history of in since in my lifetime, and and it goes on. I mean, we're not out of this yet. We we're not out of this yet. Now, uh, Brian, didn't we just have to curtail uh at at the Bartlett School because of the outbreak of the virus?
The right, that's correct, Senator. Right now, the Bartlett Elementary School, we closed last week. On uh, on Thursday, we closed for the remainder of last week and all of this week with a reassessment to occur at the end of the week. So as we've stayed open, um, this is the second time we've had to shut a school down. We had to shut down Glen Lake School um because we had a cluster of cases at Glen Lake. So um, the board has been incredibly supportive of remaining open. That's something that I have and continue to feel very strongly about. That's um what's best for kids and for families. Um, but certainly, the, you know, the challenges of the pandemic just uh continue every single day for us.
Right, no, no, no question. Kudos, kudos to you and the board for keeping the schools open, because the learning experience that has been lost for these these schools that have been close could never be recaptured. And who's the loser? The kids. The kids are the losers. And uh, I I I can't tell you, in Manchester, what a, what a problem that's been. And I'm sure you talked to our superintendent, who was working on, trying to do a good job. But when you have a dropout rate like we have in Manchester, I mean, that's, that's terrible. And and you're in a no, a no win situation because you can't recover. So kudos to to Gosta for keeping it going. Uh, recognize that there will be changes this year. Uh, the propositions will be brought before the legislature and um, they'll, they'll be discussed. The the initial item, though, Scott, that that you you addressed, the free and reduced, that's gotta be taken care of, because that's a big hit, uh, that's a big hit for everybody. And uh, the statistics that we have based on uh on what's happened this year, uh, they're they're just not, not worth being part of the mix. So that, I'm sure that'll be fixed. I I think on the House side, you know, the Senate side, that will be, that will be taken care of. And uh, we we have, we have a lot, we have a lot to do. Uh, our revenues have been fairly good for for this year, up to this point. We did have a carryover deficit. Uh, that deficit has been sliced, uh, it's been reduced. Uh, it was originally around sixty six million. I I think it's, it's gonna be about half of that. But we've gotta keep this revenue uh stream going. In in March and April, we'll determine what happens there uh in in order to to make, in order to make the budget. Uh, we have, we have, we've had huge lapses in in state government, particularly in the area of health and human services. That's, to me, that's a, that's a problem. Would you, would you appropriate money and that money can't be spent for for worthy causes? That that causes a number of problems in the communities, and the the communities uh suffer because of that. No, no need to 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 go into uh further detail on that, because you see that. I mean, you you see that in 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 families, you see that in domestic violence, you see that in the mental health of of children and uh, and the problems that ensue. And in 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 Manchester, I I I think we've seen it in a, a real expansion of the crime rate. So, but those things all have to be dealt with. Um, education, it it, I'm, I'm sure is going to be uh, gonna be looked at very, very closely. And uh, I I will be um watching it, reporting to to the superintendent, to the board as as to what happens. Uh, but based on what's what's in place as we speak, and and I will send to you tomorrow, Scott, uh, the state of New Hampshire, adequate, adequate education aid summary that's in place as we speak. This is what's in the books as of now, and we know that 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 changes take place. And we're losing, and you're absolutely right. We're losing, we're we're losing. And BHS is gonna lose about three billion. Uh, it's in uh, it's in a very precarious uh uh situation. But as you said, free and reduced plays a role, the 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 number of students plays a, plays another role. Uh, and and all of these things, uh, they tend to uh, you know, just grow as 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 we speak, and they're not growing in a positive way. And that's something that's uh obviously ve- I'm very concerned about. Now, on on the other hand, uh, I did, I chaired the Floodions Committee last, last time. I'm not gonna be chair this time, as Representative Daniels will be chair. But I did get tw- twenty million dollars a year in municipal aid. And that's the first time that had been done in the last ten years. Twenty million. You got twenty million divided amongst all of the communities with no strings attached to how that money could be spent. Goffstown got its money, Manchester got its money. How you spend it was was up to you. I I think it's important that we keep municipal aid in the game, because it in some way helps with the tax rate. And e- e- everybody wants to keep the tax rate down because of the fact that we rely so heavily on the, on the property tax. So those are the kinds of things that that I'm working on, you know, and as as we speak. But education presents the the greatest problem. It does pre- present the greatest problem, and it's the, in 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 my, in my opinion, I I was a teacher most of my life, uh, uh, college administrator. I I think it's the key, you know. I've always said public education is the key to a, to a, to a free and democratic society. And anyway, we diminish that, we we create a significant number of problems. I I think one of the things that our Commissioner of Education is attempting to do is bring lots of money into the state for charter schools. Charter schools, in my opinion, though, have an adverse impact on the public school system. Uh, there's, there's, there will be money to create twenty new charter schools. Twenty new ones. What's that, what's that gonna do to the enrollment in in the public schools? If it reduces the enrollment significantly, again, it has an adverse effect on the money you get, because the money, the money is uh built upon average, at the ADM, the Average Daily Movement. All the things that we have to think about and and we have to consider. Uh, but I I understand the problem. It's, it's, it's very evident to me. I've been in the, I've been in the business a long time. Uh, I I I understand. I, I did serve on my local school board for ten years. Heather, I I never got to be chair, but I did serve and I did chair the Floodions Committee. So I I know what, I know what, I know the burdens and the toughest job I I ever had. Any political office I've held was a member of the school board. So I, I give all of you kudos for serving on the, on the school board. It's the toughest, toughest job of all. Parents call all the time. I see them at the grocery store. I see them in uh, I see them at 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 the church. I see them when I'm walking down the street. And and everyone has a concern, some positive, some negative. So kudos to all of you for the, for the great job you do. Kudos to the superintendent uh for what he does. I thought the audit report was terrific, Scott, because that's a real transition from the audit report that that you had to deal with a few years ago, with that uh cause concentration on everybody's side. But uh, what else can I tell you? What what questions do do you have as an individual, Scott and and Brian? Whatever, whatever you have, I'm more than happy to address.
So before we do any more questions, I see um State Rep Joe Alexander's hands up, and I I wanna give some of the other reps a chance to to talk about the adequacy aid if they want to. Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you, Heather. Um, and uh, thank you, Senator, for kicking this off. Um, I actually do have to agree with you that um the outcome based model, I think, in my opinion, is bad for Goffstown. Um, those schools in particular. Um, I didn't think, though, that we needed five hundred thousand dollars on a commission to tell us um that these things are bad for Goffstown or that the funding formula is um inequitable. Um, I do know that the budget that we passed, bipartisan budget, it was near unanimous in the House. It was unanimous in the, almost unanimous in the Senate. Um, it it provided more money for education than any other House budget before. Um, it, it was bipartisan. It had one point three five million in building aid, which uh we were able to put towards the modular units. Um, so that is transitioning the way to get to full day kindergarten, hopefully in the future. Um, but the budget was also responsible, so it was spending within our means um as a state. And um, that was decisions that we made on a bipartisan basis, and I know Senator DeLisandro was um a key part of that. Um, and the, the last thing I really just want to address um is that we hear you on building aid. We hear you on on full day kindergarten. We're working on those things. Um, in addition, uh, the 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 money, the charter school money that the Senator was talking about was uh forty four million dollars of free federal money going towards charter schools. Um, the Senator voted against every single month um for two years. So that that is um money that we could have just had into the state uh that wouldn't necessarily take away funding from public schools. Um, so with that, I can let somebody else address a lot of other things.
Thank you, Joe. Does anybody, one of our other reps have anything they wanna say?
This is Claire Rulard. I can't seem to find the hand to raise.
Oh, that's okay. Go ahead, Claire. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Scott, I sent you a text. I'd like you to send me the language and we can discuss discuss it on the formula fix for the free and reduced lunch that we can work on and probably get that thing done for you. That's the first thing. Uh, the second thing is, we don't have the revenues yet. They're coming uh from all of the state departments to ways and means next week. We will know more through ways and means as we go through that process. Um, one of the things that I I did wanna find out about is the uh full day kindergarten. And I guess one of the things that I had a question about, where we, we feel that full day kindergarten is a really um good place to begin the teaching and helps our children learn and get the best results. Uh, but evidently, Goffstown schools are doing so well that they don't get enough aid because our our numbers are so well. So I'm I'm just not sure that we can justify the numbers that um we are spending per student, yet we have fabulous results, and we wanna try to make sure that kids have better results, so we need full day kindergarten. I'm not a proponent of full day kindergarten. I'll say that right out. And I know that, you know, you know, Superintendent Balky, that probably doesn't fit with your way of how this needs to go, but I I'm not a fan of that. Um, but we certainly do and will try to get whatever we can for Goffstown uh for the, our schools. Uh, I agree with um Lou DeLisandro that you guys are doing a great job this year in a very, very difficult time. And um, I have not heard anybody, anyone at all in this town think that something else needs to be done. You're doing a great job, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Claire. Dan, I see your hand up.
Thank you. The one thing that that um that we're all talking about in money, in money attributable to the number of students. Goffstown and quite frankly, New Boston, part of the S A U, has really hit against every or most other communities in New Hampshire, where our enrollment, after we lost, after our third town of Dunbarton decided to leave the, left the F A U, our enrollment did not decrease. And so we are still having space issues and unlike some of the other towns who may be getting more space and doing more things with it, we can't, because we have not seen a reduction in enrollment.
Thank you, Dan. Alan, I saw your hand up. Go ahead, Alan.
There we go. Okay. Um, yes, over the years, yes, the state's enrollment uh for students uh has gone down. Goffstown either maintained or it increased, particularly at the lower levels. Um, we have portable classrooms, modular units at all three of our elementary schools. We are full, over ca- over capacity uh for various reasons at those schools, enrollment and then service needs of our children. One of our schools, um, and two of our elementary schools are older schools. One of them, Bartlett, I believe this year turns one hundred years old as a school. The building, uh, the elementary school's classrooms, square footage wise, are significantly below current standards for uh school classrooms, that therefore it limits the number of children we can put in them. Um, having children in the modules certainly tells us we need to be working on space needs um and trying to figure out how to do that. Again, needing this state construction aid, uh, which it's, my understanding, is not available. I understand about past uh bonds and all that and and uh, but we're at a point where we, and especially if it were required for full day kindergarten, um, we need to add on to something. We need to be building. And there's no way, I don't believe, that this town will, could ever pass any kind of a building uh without the state construction aid being in there. And if the state is going to uh go for uh full day kindergarten, I believe they're going, should do what they did with the half, with the other kindergarten program and fund it very well, including operations maybe for the first year or two, we have no space to do it here. It's not possible. It's not possible. Our kids are already in outside portable classrooms. So while the state went down, Goffstown certainly has not. And I just I just want to leave it there. And anything the state can do to get our district more funding, we're calling it adequacy aid. State funding of public education certainly needs to be increased to help the local property taxpayer. Excuse me. No, I don't have an answer of how to do that. But there are times, especially when the economy is is weak, that people are suffering due to the property taxes. So anything you folks can do would be appreciated. But we do need the construction aid funds to be available for new construction. I know it's not common in the state these days, but Goffstown's a little bit different. And we do need, we will be needing to have some available to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Did any of our state reps want to respond to any of the board members before we go on to another question? Scott, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, mine was more, yeah, it is a question to our our state reps and our state senator in terms of when there are active pieces of legislation. I know that you hear from the School Boards Association as a lobbying effort. I'm sure you hear from the School Administrators Association. But let me give you a couple of examples. So a couple of years ago, there was a bill that would for kindergarten transportation. And innocently enough, maybe it was a good thing, it was to provide kindergarten transportation. You know, so K through K through eight. And what happened was because we're a half day program this year, we had to provide midday kindergarten transportation. So it ended up, it's probably going to be, when all said and done, about a sixty to seventy thousand dollar cost, arguably an unfunded mandate. Is it best to reach out to you? I mean, I know you get inundated when there's all these bills and but I also know from talking to some of you that your respective parties give you these sheet hot sheets and how to vote. Like, how can our school board members or administration let you know that a particular bill has an adverse impact on Goffstown? What's the best way of doing that?
Can I take that one? It's clear.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Claire.
And then I'll let Joe sneak in. Unfortunately for Goffstown, none of the state reps are on the Education Committee this year. But the way they're going to be handling this, and we're working through this now, the leadership has decided that we're having Zoom remote hearings. So anybody can send in testimony, whether it's oral, written, Zoom, whatever it is. And I would encourage you to do that.
Okay.
Goffstown is unique in many, many ways. I would like to see some state aid for new building, for schools. I would love to see that. I just don't know where we're headed in the budget sense of things. And maybe Lou knows a little bit more about that or Joe. I anticipate that there are a slew of bills in education. I do have some pretty decent friends in education and I can kind of find out where we're headed. And I also have some pretty decent friends in finance. And we may be able to find out a little bit more there as well. That's really the best any of us not on that particular committee can do other than make our phone calls on the folks that we really know, get to the folks in finance, get to the folks in Ways and Means and and the education folks. But if you have something in particular that you want to present, you can either get it to one of us and we can present it, or you can send it in yourself. It may not be a bad idea for one of you to get it to one of us to get it in there and we can submit it.
Okay.
It's up to you folks.
Thank you, Claire. Go ahead, Joe, and then Mike, I'll have you talk after Joe. Go ahead.
Thank you, Heather. And just to underscore what Claire said about just reaching out, we all have different friends on different committees. And we're also, at least the state rep portion, like we communicate almost daily with each other. And also, if you just want to pick up the phone and call me, I mean, my number, you should all know my number. It's online. It's really easy to get to. I just recommend doing that because we all have different people that we communicate with. I'm sure the senator also has different people too, so we can be in communication with each other.
Thank you, Joe. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I just exactly had, as Claire had had said, I was involved with a meeting, a Zoom meeting yesterday when we we reviewed, actually yesterday, excuse me, Friday, the days all come together sometimes. So on Friday morning, where we reviewed the the new House remote testimony form, much like what the Senate is using. So I I would strongly recommend if there is a specific House bill, yes, please reach out to one of us. We'd be more than happy to help you. I am on resources, which is completely nothing to do with education. But I have a couple of real good friends on education. One individual is actually involved with a pretty significant caucus at the House. So she she is got quite a bit of responsibility and she's right on top of everything. So I could I can definitely, you know, get in touch with her and learn some of the specifics from 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 her perspective on each bill that's coming up. So and I can also assist you if you have any questions on how to get to that remote form. Because you can, we all can listen in, obviously, on any hearing, but you can also testify and and actually have a position on the hearing. And I strongly recommend that. Okay?
All right. Thank you, Mike. Jenny, I see your hand. And then Senator, you'll go after Jenny. Go ahead, Jenny.
I just want to make the point that as far as kindergarten goes, full day kindergarten in Goffstown, I think the parents really are for full day kindergarten in Goffstown. A fact of that really is when the state went for and said we would have full day kindergarten in Goffstown, we had all kinds of phone calls trying to register kids for full day kindergarten in Goffstown. And we had to tell them, gee, really sorry, but we don't have full day kindergarten in Goffstown. And they look around in surrounding communities where they have full day kindergarten because those towns have had decreasing enrollment and they have room to be able to have kindergarten in their towns. And because Goffstown has not had that happen, we've had increase in our enrollment in our elementary schools and in our kindergarten. We, that's not an option for us. And as a matter of fact, not only do we need more classrooms, we would need to have full day kindergarten. We would need a cafeteria and a gym in our school as well. Our parents are looking for it and they pay for kindergarten for their kids, which is really not fair. Not only do they pay the taxes, they have to pay full day kindergarten or daycare for their children another year because we can't offer them kindergarten. So building aid is really important in this town for people. We're getting less aid and we're getting no building aid as well. So those things are really important for us, for our taxpayers, who end up paying more taxes all the time. So just my points.
Thank you, Jenny. Go ahead, Senator.
Oh, thank you. I I think with regard to legislation, Scott, the municipal association puts out a bulletin before before the session, it designates important bills. That's one way to isolate legislation that you're concerned with. But I would say contacting your your legislator. I've had many, many contact me and you know my number, you know my office number. You know how you you could reach me about any piece of legislation that that concerns you. The Republicans have control of the House. They've got control of the Senate. They've got control of the Executive Council and they have control of the governor's office. So the key piece of legislation is going to be the governor's presentation, which will come in February. What's in that? What's in that? What's in that bill? And secondly, what's in the Capitol? What's in the Capitol budget? And Capitol budget starts really in the House of Representatives. Joan Graham is now chairman of the Capitol Budget in the House. I worked well with him. I was on that committee when I was in the when I was in the House. So the Capitol budget's important for for buildings and building aid is important. As I said, we began building aid nineteen fifty five. That's when building aid was initiated. And we, up until maybe, I think it was ten years ago, maybe a little longer than that, we paid for building aid. And we paid for it on a pay as you go basis. And we have a formula by which building aid is distributed. But A, you could get in touch with us. I I I think every every month, the the state of New Hampshire puts out a an item called the Focus. You could get the Focus online. It's the report on the financial status of the state of of New Hampshire. It it currently, you know, based on the December Focus, which is the last one that was published, our our revenues are still running ahead of plan. We do have a carryover deficit. That deficit has to be taken care of. We have carried deficits over into another biennium. But generally speaking, we want to solve the deficit problem. And if the deficit remains, we'll have to go to the rainy day fund, the revenue stabilization account, which has a hundred fifteen point nine million dollars in it as we as we speak. That's how we'll that's how we'll balance the budget. But being in touch with your legislator is is very, very important. And the Republican caucus, and I'm sure they talk about education, Democratic caucus. Are priority pieces of legislation. And indeed, they have to be, they have to be looked at. And again, they will be voted on. I think that that it's going to be very interesting to watch action in the House this year. There are a number of different factions in the House. There are, I think there are a group of seven House members who want to secede from the Union. I I don't know if those people will remain remain in the House of Representatives. There are fifty members of the House who won't wear masks. And yet, the governor has mandated masks. We know that masks are essential in in doing our part in holding back the virus. So things like that have become very, very, very important. And we got to function. We have to function as a group. We have to work together to solve to solve problems. You know, life is a series of problem solving exercises. But it takes everybody working together to solve these problems. We work out at the local level to to run to run our schools, to do a good job at the schools. Hopefully, the state is in sync with you and is going to work with you. We've we've tried to do that in the past. We'll continue to do that, to do that in the future. But education reform is a key issue. It's going to come before the House. It's going to come before the Senate. Building aid, again, will come before the House and will come before the Senate. Watch the governor's budget presentation in February. The first order of business is the budget goes to the House of Representatives. Ken Wyler is chairman of the Appropriations Committee in the House. And he will call the shots in terms of the organization of that budget and how that budget moves moves forward. So those are things to look at. I would say be in touch with your legislators, both the House people and the Senate people. I make myself available. I I go to your to select this meetings. I talk to selectmen. I'm constantly in in touch with your superintendent of schools. And Scott, I'm in touch with with you on an as needed basis. And I think all of us want to serve. That's why we've run through these offices. That's why we're there. We want to serve. We want to do the best we we can for our communities. So please be be in touch with us, you know. Communication saves the nation. And we've had four years of no communication at the national level, zero communication. We're going to correct that on the twentieth of January with the installation of a new president. And we're going to communicate. We're going to communicate and get things done. I I make that promise to you and I'm sure every representative feels the same way.
And I think. Senator, if I could just hop in, if I could just hop in, I've emailed your office multiple times and have not gotten a reply. So if we're looking at communication, like my email's open, I'm welcome to chat with you.
If you give me my office now, nobody's in there. That office hasn't been occupied.
I emailed your.
Let me give you my, let me give you my home email. It's L dot DeLisandro at Comcast dot net. So if you're mailing it to my office, that hasn't been occupied since March thirteenth, when they closed down the State House. My my person in my office works virtually. If you send it, if you send me, if you send me an email, I I address every email. I answer every phone call. I address every email, Joe. So just send it to me. I'll drop by the house. I'm happy to have you as my guest.
That'd be great. Thank you.
You're welcome. So with with that, with that, thanks very much for for letting me be on the meeting. Take care, stay happy, stay healthy, keep the dream alive and well, and have a great, great, great American day. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Senator. Brian and Scott, I know we had other questions on the.
Yeah, yeah, I was just going to chime in. Scott, it looked like we lost Barbara Griffin.
She dropped back in on the phone, I think.
Oh, she did. Okay.
Yeah.
Good. So we should, if Barbara can hear me, we should give Barbara certainly a chance to chime in.
Absolutely. Barbara, are you there?
I I admitted a cell phone. I assumed it was her because she dropped off, so that's why.
Okay.
Doesn't she have to hit like nine or something to unmute?
That's for that's for the conference bridge line. So it was somebody who she joined, I presume that she joined with her cell phone.
Yes, yeah, that's her cell phone.
Yeah.
Okay, well, minimally, I wanted to give her the chance to chime in just because she's a a wealth of knowledge and.
There she is.
Hey.
Oh, okay.
Hi, Barbara.
On top, good evening, everybody. On top of having a bad connection, I have a new phone and I don't know how to use it yet. So that's part of the problem.
Dear.
Oh, you know, thank you very, thank you very much for having us all again. I'm actually a little disappointed the senator dropped off. I actually thought that called it that those last, oh, you're still here. Great, Senator, because unfortunately, I didn't think a lot of those comments went very far to opening the door for communication, considering that there are five Republican representatives from this town. But you and I have always been able to work in the past. So I'm hopeful, despite some of of what just got said, that we're going to be able to do that. I thought that the comments from the board and the concerns are very real. I think other representatives addressed the communication issue and that's always really important. You know, nobody's mentioned the fact there's actually another lawsuit going on in regards to school funding. So Lord knows what, when that's going to be resolved and what it's going to do. Goffstown has done, you know, I've watched this board over the years as it's taken control of the student costs. You've been below the state average for years. You've done great things with that and I'm thrilled that you've all been open through all of this. So as a board, it it's frankly good to sign on to be reminded of the struggles you have to deliver education in town. I'm I am somewhat worried about what realistic expectations can be for the next few years, regardless of who you think the party is doing the bills. Because I note that Scott talked about the difference in the level of funding from ten, essentially a decade ago. But a decade ago, the state was in an incredible deficit deficit situation, the worst deficit situation as a state it had ever been in. And there were huge changes that had to be made. So he's absolutely right in the lack of what you might think is an annualized increase that makes sense. But unfortunately, ten years ago, we were coming out of a very different economic situation and things were pretty bad in the state. I'm hopeful there are a couple of proposals for new revenue sources in the state. And I'm hopeful that in the budget coming out, that we'll be able to do something to assist you. The particular bill information and how it affects the community is always helpful. And the senator is absolutely right. The governor is going to come out with his budget. I think the governor in general has been a pretty big supporter of the schools. And we'll have to see where we go with that. I I'm not sure about the discussion about full day kindergarten. I think Goffstown has a lot of, there's a lot of need, but there's a lot of concerns, I think, about going forward on that. I think a lot of people are concerned about how your, how students are doing in today's environment in school. Because I know it's been really tough for any, everybody. But I have to say, I drive by the high school, I see the cars in the parking lot. I see the cars in the parking lot at school and I love it. You've done a great job and thank you very much for having us all here tonight.
Thank you, Barbara. I appreciate that. Brian, I know, and Scott, I know we had sent some questions. Did you want to touch on the retirement fund question? Brian, I know, and Scott, I know we had sent some questions. Did you want to touch on the retirement fund question that?
Yeah, we, we certainly can speak to that, and Scott can, um, give the detail. Uh, again, I, I think that you're all aware that when there are things, um, that are voted on, such as an increase in the employer share of retirement, that has very real costs at the local level. So the, the budget cycle that we're just, uh, bringing to deliberative had an increase, Scott, of what was it? Over seven hundred thousand?
Yeah.
In, increased cost for retirement. So, you know, uh, and, and, um, I think most of you have heard my many diatribes over the years about adequacy. But, you know, clearly, I, I think you guys have a good handle. I appreciate having the, the opportunity to, um, to speak with you. I certainly, um, I think I could always do more in terms of adequacy, advocacy, and certainly, um, but, you know, Barbara's right. The, the lawsuit that's ongoing has been heard by the state Supreme Court. We're waiting on their, um, final determination. That's the convale lawsuit. But so at this point, I think everyone's familiar, there was Claremont one, there was Claremont two, there's been the Lunandary lawsuit, now the convale lawsuit, there was a Dover lawsuit in between those. So, you know, just continuously, education funding has never been fixed in this state. So please keep that in mind, um, when you're making votes. In terms of some of the more political types of things during a Republican-dominated led, led House and Senate and governor's office, we would expect to see more things like vouchers, school vouchers, school choice, a lot of those kinds of things. That's all the, the typical, um, bills that we would expect to see moving through. And, you know, um, please just keep in touch, um, in addition to us reaching out to you. If there are bills that you wonder, how would this impact the Gofftown School District? Call me. Call Scott. Um, we're, we're available, and, uh, we're happy to partner. But, um, more than anything, we really appreciate you taking the time to be with us tonight. And we, we do have the rest of our meeting to get on to, but it just really shows, um, your dedication to your town. So it means a lot to us. Thanks for being with us, and, uh, please stay close and please stay in touch with us.
Yes, thank you very much, everybody, for coming tonight. Before we say goodnight, is there anything else anybody, uh, state reps or senator wants to say before we bid you goodnight?
No, I think just that, uh, we, we understand, uh, the legislative process. As I said, communications is the key, Barbara pointed out. I've got, I've got great relationships with all of the reps in, in, in Goffstown. It's, it's going to be a, a very interesting budget year. I, I'm very, and we should just be on, be on top of it, and, uh, as I say, communicate with one another, and, uh, we'll, we'll get through this. We always, we always get through it, but, uh, thanks so much for allowing us to be on, uh, to be at the meeting. It's great to see all of you and, uh, look forward to seeing you in person. That's the key.
Next time.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good night very much. Thank you. Scott, get in touch.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you very much for what you do. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Your mic.
All right. All right. So, hi, everybody. So now we're, um, done with our presentations. We're gonna move on to our school board, uh, regular meeting. So the first is approving January fourth board minute, meeting, um, meeting minutes. Can never say that. Did anybody see anything? Okay, uh, hang on one second, Ellen. Um, before we take a motion, if there's any changes, let's do the changes before we do motions. Did anybody see any changes? I'm seeing, okay, so go ahead, Ellen. Ellen makes the motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Yes, Ellen did the first. Who's the second? Need a hand. There we go. There's Ginny. All right, so I'm gonna do roll call. Uh, Retta? Oh. Are you saying yes? I think she's nodding yes.
Yes, sorry about that.
That's okay.
My, uh, my mute was hidden. Yes.
No worries. Dan Cloutier?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So we're unanimous. Uh, correspondence, Brian?
Uh, no correspondence this evening.
All right, perfect. Commendations, good news. Caleb, go ahead.
Nothing big tonight. Just, uh, again, one of the, how I continue to shout out to the performing arts department. They've been doing an absolutely amazing job with somehow managing to put on, uh, I mean, I'm, I'm part, I'm do the tech crew for them, and just getting a behind-the-scenes look. They're really doing a really great job with following COVID guidelines, maintaining safe, isn't saying, and still putting on, um, what amounts to as much of a normal year as we could have hoped for with the musical. Uh, and also just the teachers, um, this week is midterm week, um, finals week for half semester, for just single semester classes. And the teachers have just been, uh, amazing with recognizing students, uh, needs to be flexible, letting them shift midterms around to, um, you know, Friday or, uh, as a makeup day. And I just, the staff has done an amazing job this year, um, with learning new things and adapting this new environment. So that's all.
Thank you, Caleb. Appreciate you saying that. Uh, anybody else? Commendations, good news. Uh, Ginny, go ahead.
I just appreciate, um, Bernie Federer's newsletter, excuse me, that he sends to us every month about Bartlet's, um, going ons. They're all always very informative, and, um, I love the little things that they've been doing. So thank you, um, Bernie, for spending the time to send it to us.
Thank you, Ginny. Anyone else? Oh, go ahead, Retta.
Um, yeah, I just, uh, some of you may or may not have noticed, but there's been some updates to our SAU website. And if you go to the school board section, you'll see that finding the minutes and everything is a lot easier. So if you haven't been there, go check it out.
Thank you, Retta. Anyone else before we move on? All right, uh, public comment. Scott, do we have anyone?
We do not.
All right. Moving on to committee reports. Scott, financial report.
All right, I'm sharing my screen with you now. We have at tonight a manifest of one million eight hundred forty-six thousand, two hundred sixty-five dollars and thirteen cents, uh, of which a little over one point four million dollars is attributed to payroll taxes and benefits. Uh, special ed activity, again, very similar. You'll see this from manifest to manifest in terms of the vendors, well, almost thirty-three thousand. For your general expenses, you have your SAU assessment, which was a hundred fifty-nine thousand and change. EverSource, electricity, Dead River is your propane charges, uh, Gov Connection. Those were software licenses, which were grant-funded. Uh, Home Depot Pro, this was cleaning equipment. We bought an auto scrubber machine to help. Again, that's that one that you ride on. It cleans the floors and everything so that our custodians can, can do, uh, uh, cleaning on a more frequent basis. Uh, that was almost seventeen thousand five hundred. Uh, Phonak hearing systems, again, these are FM sound systems. I think we procured sixteen of them that have been distributed to different schools. Uh, that was also grant-funded. Uh, BMO Harris Bank, uh, this was part of that last grant, um, and we bought video equipment. We're putting in video cameras, uh, to do broadcasts from the high school theater, as well as Mountain View Middle School, uh, gym. And lastly, with staples, these were printers that were also grant-funded. Uh, we didn't have any food service expenses that were over five thousand. So are there any questions on the manifest?
Can you go back to the full screen, Scott?
Um, sure.
I lost it. I can't see if everybody has questions.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
There we go.
Full screen. I thought you were talking about the manifest itself. I apologize.
No, that's okay. Um, anybody have any questions for Scott? All right, seeing none, I'll need a motion to pass the man.
I can make, I can make a motion that we approve the manifest, uh, for this evening in the amount of one million eight hundred forty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirteen cents.
Thank you.
A second.
Second.
Uh, that was Tim, the second. Any other discussion before I do roll call? Okay, seeing none. Retta?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Carrie? Carrie? Oh, there you are. Okay. Uh, Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Ginny? Yes.
And Heather, yes. We're unanimous. All right, Scott, voters' guide.
Yeah, also, if I could, I'm, I'm gonna, because we're not in the high school, I'm gonna be sending that manifest for electronic signatures via PandaDoc, uh, tonight. Just so if you could sign that, that'd be great. Uh, in terms of the voters' guide, uh, I'll just share my screen with you. So I have tentatively prepared it. So Heather, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna consolidate all of this. Um, so this is, you know, page one of it. And then I have other, uh, other, this is the one for the budget, and I have one for the capital reserve fund. So, uh, I will, I typically wait until after the, um, the deliberative session to make sure that there hasn't been any types of changes. And then I also, right now, I know what our, and Jared will talk about this in, in a few minutes, in terms of the Warren article. Uh, but what I'll do is I'll get this into a, um, you know, draft form. I'll send it off to you, and then you can, we can, you know, typically you, I think, as chair, review that. And Brian reviews it as well. So, and then it, it goes to town hall, and they, they, they send that out, uh, to all the voters.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Um, so moving on, budget committee report. Jared?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Um, Budget Committee met last Tuesday for our public session. I would like to thank the school board members that did call into that. Though no public comment was given, I know that you're showing support by just showing up, so I do appreciate those members that did do that. Um, for article number two, um, that budget, uh, passed unanimously as proposed. So that was roughly twenty thousand and three dollars less than what we sent to the Budget Committee. Again, that was twenty thousand dollars reduction for substitutes, and I think there was three one-dollar items that we also removed from the budget. Um, so Scott, do we need to have a recommendation for that budget, committee budget? I don't know if we've done that, uh, at a prior meeting.
Yeah, so that, that is something that, um, and I think we're gonna be doing that in your new business.
Okay, so we'll do that later on.
Yeah, so there'll be board, there'll be board votes to recommend, uh, later on in the agenda. Okay, so Article Two, um, did pass twelve to zero, so it did pass unanimously for the Budget Committee that was there. Article Three, which is our CRF, two hundred thousand dollars, um, for our CRF, that did pass, uh, for recommend, ten to two. Um, the people that voted against it was, um, Representative Alexander and Spencer Diaz, uh, that were also, uh, at the meeting. Um, so ten members did, did pass it. Two of them did not. I would like to send a special shout-out to Scott for the work that he did, as well as all the administrators that really put in the time, including Superintendent Polk, he that attended the meetings. As we know, the budget process, we go through it at the school side. It is basically three to four times longer on the Budget Committee side. So I do want to say thank you very much for your time and effort that you put in on that. It was greatly appreciated. And I think with what, the work that you did, it really made it smooth. As we can see, there was very little reductions in what we provided to the Budget Committee itself.
Thank you, Jared.
Last piece of business, um, is that we do have the deliberative session. I think we might talk about it later on the agenda. I'm not sure.
Yes.
But it is, okay, we do. Okay, so we'll talk about that.
That's a new business.
Great.
All right, you're all set?
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Next is policy review. We have a meeting next Monday, the twenty-fifth, at five-thirty. It is now a Zoom meeting. It will not be at the SAU. And then C and E, Ginny?
Um, C and E will have a meeting on next Monday, the twenty-fifth as well, and that has been changed to a Zoom meeting also.
And that's at seven, right?
At seven PM. Yep.
Okay. Uh, joint area committee. Dan, you want to go talk to that?
Okay, um, it went real quick. Um, I think it was one of the shortest meetings we have had for the smaller committee, um, ever. So, boy, I forgot about that. I'm doing it from memory, so pipe in. We talked about doing a very quick analysis, as you heard from Brian at the last meeting. Brian and Scott were mentioning that if we just go on the warrant next year and say about the way we like everything the way it is, would you mind if we just extended it for another ten years, uh, voters? Then we don't have to ask them to actually convene a meeting schedule, and Mrs. Moore won't have to go to like thirty-five different meetings and take minutes, or we don't have to attend them either. So the questions that surrounded that were pretty much, do we like the agreement? Is there any problem with it? Um, is that okay to do? And we said, we checked with the attorney, and he said, okey-dokey. And they said, what about if in the future we want to put sixth grade from New Boston into Gofftown School, if you have room for them? And if we wanted to do that, and all we would have to do is make an addendum, just like a tuition agreement. And we can model the tuition agreement and say, hey, it's kind of like the same thing as the area, and it can be totally separate. How'd I do?
You did well, Dan.
Thank you.
Full area agreement, or the full area committee meets in June. So if any board members had questions, concerns, we would discuss it together in June, whether people wanted to open it or, or not. And that's also with the New Boston side. They were gonna check with their board as well. So we don't need to have answers tonight, but definitely think about it. And then we'll meet in June as a full committee and go from there. Are you all set, Dan?
Yes, ma'am, unless Ginny had anything to add.
Ginny, do you have anything to add?
No, I think you're right on point, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so, uh, superintendent report.
So just a few things to share with the board this evening. I'd already, um, spoken earlier, but we did move Bartlet to a fully remote model. I do hope to evaluate towards the end of the week, and, um, if we're able to, we will reopen that school next week. And if we had to wait another week, um, based on COVID cases or staff availability, we'll make that determination a little later this week. But I, I do feel badly. I want to get those kids back in school, and, uh, we will do everything we can. I wanted to let the board know that as we've gotten into our winter sports season, which thus far has been, um, really pretty positive, that, um, Athletic Director Huff wanted me to let you know that during basketball games, we're finding a need for more access to bathrooms for our student athletes. And, uh, Justin is working on a plan that they're going to allow, um, some teams under the supervision of their coaches to use the locker rooms. And, uh, Justin feels that there will be sufficient space, and they'll have, um, appropriate protocols to make sure that we can use the locker room safely. That was something that we had originally said we weren't gonna allow the locker room. So just as we've gotten a little further into this, Justin's identified that need. Um, another request I have from the high school is, as the board knows, we, oh, I see Mr. Cloutier.
Thank, thank you, Brian. Do we know why?
That was a hand or not?
Yeah, well, I'm sorry. Yeah, with the background, it's hard. I'm sorry.
Yeah, what, what he sent me, Dan, I, I cut and paste from, um, an email. He indicated that, um, that providing at this time, that they need to provide easier access to restrooms and that spacing in the locker room. This is like during halftime, Dan, so if they're playing a game that, um, kids need to, you know, the coach gives some kind of halftime adjustments, but it's mostly to be able to access the bathrooms and, uh, keep the kids together, but still allowing them to space out. And, um, they've just identified that this is a need, and there'd be less than twelve students in there, and, and he feels that they can do that safely. But that wasn't change in the protocol, so, uh, I wanted to make sure that I shared that with the board.
I wanted it to be, um, known that some other votes may have been dependent on not using the locker rooms. But if it's going to be myopic for halftime with social distance, that's one thing. If it's to change and get ready before and the sweatiness after, that's completely different.
Yeah, I think, I think this is more just that halftime and the ability for the kids to be able to use the bathroom, um, while they have such a short period of time. We'll track and monitor it. Um, Mr. Huff has done a great job keeping an eye on things.
So I saw, before you go on, Brian, I saw Ellen's hand. Um, Ellen, did you want to?
Yes. Yes, uh, with that locker rooms being used for the half-
Yes, uh with that locker rooms being used for the halftime, um we will be sanitizing them.
Yes.
Totally cleaning them after every use.
Yes.
So that it's okay for the, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Ginny, too.
Yep, go ahead, Ginny.
There'll be um an adult in there as well, so.
Yeah, the the coach, the coaches will be there the whole time, so the kids are never gonna be unsupervised.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Um, so continuing on, if I may, uh the board is aware that we do the SAT as our high school accountability metric. That testing will be occurring on March twenty-fourth and March twenty-fifth. And what the high school is proposing and because time allows, I wanted to bring this to the board for your consideration is they would like those two days to be fully remote days for our ninth, tenth, and twelfth graders that will allow us to focus on having all of the juniors physically on campus and to allow us to administer the SAT um using the resources that we have and as much space as we have. So um at this point, I do think it's a reasonable request. I think we can, we've got plenty of time. We can notify parents that those will be um remote learning days for students on those days. Um, but it really will allow us to focus on the administration of the SAT and um really make sure that we can give kids the best testing environment that we can. So um, this is something that I do support and I will approve, but I did wanna just bring this to the board for your knowledge. Um, as I always will try to do when things like this come up. So I might pause there and see if any board members have any input on that.
Go ahead, Dan.
Similar to what we did last year, these will only be Goffstown students in the Goffstown School.
A- absolutely, Dan. Um, and I've made it really clear to Mrs. Lewis that I don't want any out-of-district SAT kids at any point in time. The board may recall, we were originally slated to give the SAT last August and every single enrollee that we had, um, I I I think I'm accurate on that. If not, it was more than ninety percent were all kids from Massachusetts. So the the last thing we wanna do is be uh their testing location because they can't find a site down in Mass. So this is just our kids. And um at other points in time, if we were to offer a Saturday SAT, which we've done in the past, um at this point, I would restrict the same way because at this point, we really don't need um outside kids uh being a part of our school. Uh, Mr. Gross, if I'm allowed, if I'm allowed to share the screen, I would appreciate it.
The spirit of communication, Brian, I am sharing the screen.
Scott, Scott, I appreciate that and uh you are a gentleman and a scholar. So I'm gonna show uh moving between the phases and um just go through a little bit here. Um, and again, I don't, I don't need to belabor this. The board has heard all this information a number of times. I'd like to talk a little bit about the vaccine to start. So the state of the state is, the state is still um implementing Phase One A, which includes our healthcare workers, our first responders, our school nurses were part of that. So at this point, I think I'm not sure if they've all gotten the second dose. I know a number of them have, but our school nurses, um Chief Allard, we we listed them with our firefighters and our um EMT, so we're able to get them in the early um part of Phase One A. We're moving into Phase One B, and this is important for the board to know. The state changed the age requirement for Phase One B from seventy-five to sixty-five. And in doing so, and and I understand the logic, I know why they're doing it. Um, and uh I think from a public health perspective, there's a lot of merits to that. But I do want the board to know invariably what that will do is it's pushing out Phase Two A, which is where educators are. So where we originally were told to anticipate sometime in March that we um as K to twelve educators would be able to um sign up and start to get our our immunizations. Uh, in all likelihood, that's gonna be pushed back at least a month, probably more. I think the board has probably seen the rollout for the vaccine has not gone um, I think that smoothly um through the thirteen fixed sites. And unfortunately, the the pace that they're going at really needs to be accelerated. And I can't emphasize enough, if we value public education and we want our schools to be open, then teachers need to be vaccinated. So hopefully um before the end of the school year, we'll all have the opportunity um as educators to get the vaccine. I do wanna continue to share with the board that there are no plans right now for approvals for anyone under the age of sixteen of this vaccine. Um, Pfizer and Moderna have started the very early stages of children's trials and they're working on a group. It looks like the way they're gonna do it is they went down to sixteen on the Pfizer vaccine and eighteen on the Moderna. And the next group is gonna be in the twelve to sixteen range, and then they'll drop down below twelve. But I do want um the board to know and the general public to know that as of right now, there is no plan to vaccinate kids. They have not um gone through the trials, they've not gotten emergency authorization. So at this point, we are likely anticipating schools opening with kids not having had access to the vaccine. So that likely means that social distancing, masks, cohorting, all of those kinds of things likely have to continue because kids are not gonna be part of the vaccine process. Looking at the numbers, um, everything remains in the red. Six thousand three hundred eighty-seven active cases for New Hampshire, a case count of six hundred and forty-three per hundred thousand, six point nine percent positivity rating. Hillsborough County is above the state average of seven hundred and twelve. In Goffstown, we have a hundred and six cases, which is five hundred and eighty-five per hundred thousand. And New Boston has sixteen active cases, which was a bit of a decrease, which was good news for a total of two hundred and seventy-six. Um, taking a look at staffing, you've heard me talk about the potential need to evaluate our instructional model based on staffing. This orange line right here, where my cursor is, my mouse is, shows you what our need was in terms of sub-time needed. And the gray line below shows what we were actually able to staff. So in the month of December, you can see that we had a massive deficit in the number of subs that we were able to procure. If I look at our support staff, the picture is even more bleak. You can see here, again, you're looking at the delta between the orange line and the gray line. I needed a hundred and ninety-eight subs for support staff and I only had thirty-five. So um at this point, we do really continue to struggle. You can see that we had a slight uptick in November and then a decrease in December. So the the need for professional staff for substitutes as well as support staff remains a massive concern for us. In New Boston, gray line, orange line, essentially no difference. They've been able to fill their their needed seats. Where they have struggled a little bit is with support staff. So um at this point, New Boston's not having quite as much difficulty as we're having in Goffstown. Um, but that just really continues to be a massive um concern for us. Now I'm gonna take a look at the numbers. And I think everyone's aware that uh Mrs. Barry and her team have done a great job in capturing and sharing the information. This is on our website. And anyone who wants to see this, this is the exact same information that's provided on the state school dashboard, with the exception that our information is accurate and timely. So you can see to date, and I think uh Mrs. Barry has updated this for today, we're at a hundred and thirty-seven cases. And if you click on um this link here, it brings you to a spreadsheet that gives you every case we've had, the number of students we've had to quarantine. All of the data is right here to date. So we've had a hundred and thirty-seven cases. Uh, we had four today. Um, and you can see yesterday, we had, we we essentially have cases um every day. So uh our teams continue to do a great job. Our nurses uh continue to do really well, working with our administrators, doing the contact tracing. And interestingly enough, tomorrow being the day after Martin Luther King Day, a lot of these school districts that closed back at uh before Thanksgiving are supposed to be coming back into session. So I think that's gonna be a a challenge. I think inertia is easier to keep going than it is to start and stop. But um here we are, we're still holding fast. And uh I can't thank our teachers and our support staff enough for the great work that they've done. So that's all I have this evening. Um, and I'll pause there and see if there are any questions or anything I can clarify.
Thank you, Brian. Um, with the contact tracing, do you have enough help? I know that's a big undertaking for our staff, especially on weekends, holidays, the teachers are trying to get grades in, there's midterms. If anybody needs help, I I would hope that you would reach out to to the board. Um, I'm sure.
We would. It's it's so highly specialized and you have to really know and understand the the families, the schedule, the dynamic. It's really hard to bring in someone kind of out of the blue to to assist, but certainly if we needed more support and more capacity, we would ask. Um, the administrators have just uh taken this on and whatever the need is, whether it's uh Christmas morning or it's a a random Sunday afternoon, we're we're all there, ready to uh to spring into action. And the nurses really have been an invaluable resource. So um everyone's worked really hard and and that's what we just have to continue to do. So that's what we're uh we're prepared to do because that's what's best for our kids.
Yes, definitely. Well, and I thank you because without our district doing the contact tracing, it could be five-plus days before the Health Department it gets in touch with those individuals to let them know that they've been in contact. So by the.
You know, really, I I think, Heather, the, we we foresaw this, so we anticipated that the state would not have the capacity. And I will say, there are some really fine people up at DHHS that we have done conference calls with. So when we've had cases at Glen Lake, they were very kind to um allocate resources and to jump on um a video conference with us. Most recently, the cases we've had at Bartlett, one of the first things we did was we had a conference call with them and walked through our cases. We went through each one, looking at the possibility of what could have been school-based transmission. Did we have something occurring? Um, and in all likelihood, what we're dealing with with uh at Bartlett right now does involve school-based transmission. So they've been a resource for us. Um, and they they do help us quite a bit when we need that higher level of consultation. But you know, we just anticipated that they really wouldn't have the capacity to be able to, you know, be making the phone calls and um following up in a timely manner. So I think it was a good foresight on our part to get a team trained and to go through that Johns Hopkins um contact tracing model. And and again, I I can't thank MC enough who has really kinda taken this on. And uh she's a little like a pit bull on a bone. So when when there's COVID to be sniffed out, holy cow, get out of her way.
Well, we all appreciate it and reach out if you need help.
Indeed, thank you.
So moving on, there is no old business, correct?
Nope.
All right, so new business. The lovely calendar for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Gross. Um, I'll just walk through some of the highlights. And um you'll see here that um in the proposed calendar, we would have teacher workshop days, two teacher workshop days before the start of the school year. And I tried again to front-load the PD time in anticipation that we likely are continuing COVID mitigation measures at the start of next school year. Again, as I mentioned, that students will in all likelihood not have any vaccines. Um, we want to make sure we have sufficient time at the beginning of the school year. So our first day of school would be um that Tuesday of the last uh week in August, which is the, let's see, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one. And we would have that Friday off before Labor Day. Labor Day holiday on Monday, the sixth. And I put another teacher workshop day on the first of October. So when we're looking at our days, next year, our calendar is not complicated by statewide elections, which is a good thing. So this year, you'll recall that we had a a a primary the day after um Labor Day as well as the general election in November. We have neither of those two things next year. So it's a pretty straightforward calendar. I would highlight that I put in for Martin Luther King Day as a holiday again based on feedback that I've received as well as um just honoring Dr. King's work. And I'll speak a little bit. Um, we actually had a number of things occurring in all the schools today with respect to uh Martin Luther King Junior Day. And then um December, typical uh Christmas winter holiday. February, uh looking at the week of vacation when Massachusetts is um back in school because um no one from New Hampshire wants to ski the week that Massachusetts is off. And this would get us out on the, I believe it's the fourteenth of June is our last day. So um that's the calendar that we have uh presented to you folks and to New Boston. New Boston has one minor detail uh difference. They don't have the December teacher workshop day. We do it a little differently in New Boston. And uh the New Boston Board didn't take action. They're planning to address it at their meeting next week.
All right, did anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Rhonda.
I just want to say thank you for putting Martin Luther King Day it back in. Um, I know last year or this current calendar year was really crazy, but as I had noted in the past, we're one of three schools in the entire state that didn't um have that day off. So I'm glad that's going back in.
Thank you, Rhonda. Now, is that something that's gonna stay in? That we're not gonna keep changing back and forth?
I I would anticipate to leave that back in. And and again, kind of that vision um had been that we hadn't really been doing an awful lot, I I think, in a systematic, coordinated way to highlight and focus on the teachings of Dr. King by going to have school in session. Um, our approach and our philosophical um vision on that was to have teaching and learning occurring during the day. But um much like Veterans Day, I think we can honor uh Dr. King on an off day. So we'll we'll make that shift. And I would not anticipate um removing that in the future.
All right, um, perfect. Jared, I saw your hand up first.
Thanks, Ms. Chair. Brian, looking at the calendar, I know that the governor had put the save our Labor Days policy out there. And knowing that the local school boards would still look at um when we have our calendars, but this seems to go contrary to that of starting school after Labor Day. And I just wanted to get your thoughts on on why we're kind of doing that and reinforcing that again.
So we're actually starting, maybe I didn't explain this, we're starting before Labor Day.
That that's what I'm saying is, I thought the governor had said it would be after Labor Day, but of course, this calendar is saying before Labor Day. So I didn't know if you wanted to reinforce that again.
Yeah, I I would just say respectfully to the governor that this is a decision of the local school board. Um, however, I would make a deal that if the governor would like to pay for the full cost of uh a true adequate education, I'd be happy to start on any day he would like to.
All right, thank you, Jared. Ellen, I saw your hand, and then Dan.
Yeah, um, with Martin Luther King Day, I cannot support a calendar where we have off. I think we went to having the kids in school so they could be learning uh about uh Martin Luther King and the civil rights movement. Um, and if our teachers uh were not doing that, then that's a different question. I think that uh actually in past years, I'm pretty sure the school, the school board's been told they're doing all kinds of things, each grade level uh were doing something. Uh, I'd rather the kids be in school, learning about the importance of the civil rights movement than having a day off and not even knowing why they're not in school. So that's just my opinion. I won't be voting in favor of this calendar because of that.
Thank you, Ellen. I do know, and Brian, you can correct me, they in the schools, they do talk about Martin Luther sometimes.
So in.
Prior.
Go going back several years at this point, what what we had was a lot of individual teachers teaching um certain lessons. And we really wrapped around, probably, I think, three years ago at this point, Heather, that we really had a a coordinated, school-wide approach. And some of the schools kind of take it a little further than other schools, but um that that had been the shift that we had made. And um in fact, a lot of those things were occurring today in our classrooms across all the different grade levels, but um, the idea was to really make sure that we're honoring um and respecting the work of Dr. King by by taking it as a federal holiday. I never wanted anyone to think that our being in school was. I never wanted anyone to think that our being in school was any kind of a lack of support of Dr. King or, uh, diminishing the importance of, of the work. We were trying to actually do the exact opposite. So instead of it, it being, um, a disconnected day off to have that focus being on teaching and learning. And I, I think the shift that I, I, I'm now proposing is much like Veterans Day, where we're not, uh, by fed, by state law, we're not allowed to be in school on Veterans Day. But we always have, uh, Veterans Day assemblies and we honor the, the sacrifices of our veterans. And we would propose a similar approach with, uh, Martin Luther King Junior Day.
Thank you, Brian. Um, so Dan, I saw your hand up. Go ahead.
Actually, I only heard most of the correct name of the holiday once. And then with, when Brian just said it correctly, partially, RSA 28801 says Martin Luther King Junior, Civil Rights Day. That is the name of the holiday in, in New Hampshire. And it's junior. I don't know who the father is, but we keep saying Martin Luther King, but not Martin Luther King. Junior Civil Rights Day is the actual name of the holiday.
Thank you, Brian. Is that it?
That was it. I just wanted to make sure that that civil rights was in there because I'm sure the gentleman did a lot of other things. But it's for civil rights that we're supposed to be talking about.
Thank you. Um, I just had a question about the October teacher workshop day. Um, is that an added teacher workshop day or we, did we move it? And that's not Columbus Day?
It's, it's not Columbus Day. During the last round of contract negotiations with the Goffstown Education Association, we increased the number of teacher workshop days by one. So that additional day is a new day that in the past we didn't have. And the thinking Heather of putting it in October is that we still anticipate in all likelihood that there will need to be ongoing COVID mitigation. And, um, we thought that it made more sense to have that day earlier in the year. And the month of October didn't have any other holidays that we were observing. So, um, that seemed to be the least disruptive and the timing worked in terms of being at, you know, right at the, within the first couple of weeks of month of school.
Right. Now I agree. I think our kids and teachers by Veterans Day, they're, they really had, would have night, been nice to have a break somewhere in between a three-day weekend. So, um, hopefully that teacher workshop day stays somewhere in October. I think that's a great breakup between starting the end of August and going until Veterans Day is a long time. Um, Ellen, I saw your hand up.
Uh, yeah, uh, this is a couple of times now, I think I've, I've heard, uh, Brian, you say that next school year, we need to continue, uh, the COVID mitigation steps. Are you anticipating actually not going back full-time next year?
I think it's too soon to tell, Ellen. Um, I would hope to be back in fully next year. But again, given the fact that kids aren't at this point, um, anywhere in the queue for vaccines, we're probably still looking at things like, um, masking and sanitizing and cleaning and hygiene and all of those things. If, uh, if kids have not been vaccinated, they can still be transmitting and spreading COVID. So I, I anticipate, um, that we're still gonna have to have mitigation measures. I would hope to be fully reopen. Um, I don't want to be pessimistic about it. But, uh, in, in all likelihood, um, if we are fully open, I think the board is gonna need to consider that we will not be distanced. Um, we will not have the ability, you know, to really ensure cohorting like we do now. But I'm not sure that we're gonna need to. So, you know, I, I, I would hope to be able to fully reopen. Um, but at this point, you know, we're, we're gonna have to wait and see what conditions look like and, and hopefully by then with enough people getting immunized that, you know, the, the virus will, will have dissipated. But I don't think it's gonna be gone. Um, and, and again, I, I don't, I don't think any of us have a crystal ball. But, you know, until we, you know, we have 350 million people in this country, until we start getting a large percentage of them, um, with the vaccine, um, in all likelihood, COVID is gonna be with us for a while.
Yeah, and I don't disagree. And I would certainly think we continue with the masking and washing hands and sanitizing. Um, but there's a reason children are not a focus with regard to the COVID. And one of our really big concerns with this whole thing, we don't want anybody being sick, was that the adults and the staff getting it and then us not being able to have school because we don't have our staff to do it. But once the staff is inoculated and inoculated, the kids can be there. The staff is not going to get sick.
Um, yeah, so a, a, again, I, I think we've got to, you know, wait and see what the public health information is gonna look like. Um, we have seen more spread with adults than kids for sure. But we certainly do have kids that, uh, well, you can look at the numbers. We've had a lot of students who are positive. And, you know, again, certainly kids don't get as sick as people over the age of 65. You know, but long-term, we don't know the effects on, uh, people of, of having COVID and what that potentially does. If you have COVID-19 when you're a child and there could be respiratory complications down the road, who knows? So, and Ellen, I would say I really hope to be fully reopen. And, um, in all likelihood, you know, we're still looking at some of those mitigating, uh, measures. But we'll have to see when we get closer. But I, I think, uh, the board can rest assured that my belief is we're better open than closed. We're better in person than remote. And, uh, I will continue to do that. So if we can, um, be all in and keep everyone safe, that's what we're gonna do.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Um, so with regard to the calendar, have we heard from MST yet with their vacation time? Probably not.
No, and, and Mrs. Moran, um, is very diligent about speaking with, um, with Manchester. They don't do their calendar until much later. Um, we did look at the state model calendar and we've looked at a couple of other districts that have already adopted. We actually don't have to adopt until April, so, um, we can take a little bit of time, but we're gonna be looking, um, for the board to approve, uh, before too, too long. Denise, is that accurate?
Yeah, she's saying, yeah.
Yeah.
We need to know what MST is doing first before we move ahead with this calendar. So this
I would say Heather, just keep in mind that MST has changed their calendar like a dozen times this year. And so
Right, but we've had to change ours.
Yeah, so it's just
So, um, I, I'd like to wait until we absolutely have to approve this. So we don't
Yeah, we, we can, uh, we can put it on a future agenda. So if anyone has any other thoughts, we're, we're happy to revisit it, but, uh, we'll keep chasing them down.
Okay. Dan, I see your hand.
Just curious, what do we change on our calendar when MST would change their calendar?
It's usually February vacation.
Yeah.
That, that, that's the one that we've, um, run up against most often. That if, um, and again, we, we tend to avoid the so-called Massachusetts Vacation Week in February. But there have been times when Manchester has taken that same week off. That's really, that's really the, the hurdle. And, and to a lesser extent, April, but it's those two vacation weeks, Dan. That's what, that's what we've, uh, tried to align with them on.
Right, because one year we approved February and their week was different and we had to change it. And that was complete confusion for families who had already made plans and you know, that was just a couple of years ago.
How many, how many students are we affecting at MST, um, versus keeping the Massachusetts school system and our school system in opposite weeks?
Uh, probably about 150 high school kids, maybe 200.
That's significant.
Yeah, it's a, it's a pretty good chunk. I, but I think to Heather's point, we've got some time and, uh, we, we can continue to reach out and, uh, I'm happy to speak with the Manchester Superintendent and see if they, you know, at the very least, if they haven't, uh, if they haven't approved their calendar, at least if we know what weeks they're recommending.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the calendar before we move on to deliberative? All right, seeing none. So next is preparing for the deliberative. Um, we need motions for stuff. We need to talk about who's gonna talk. And I know we're still, we have a meeting tomorrow night trying to figure out the logistics of how the deliberative. Brian, Scott, you wanna?
Yeah, but let us, let us start there. The, the first piece is, is that, uh, Mr. Gross and I meet every single week with our police and fire chiefs, as well as our town administrators in both Goffstown and New Boston. And we have been talking about deliberative for two months, um, at this point, may, maybe even a little longer. And, uh, I know that Mr. Horn, our town administrator, I, I think we're aligned that we believe it's, uh, it's appropriate and safe for us to do deliberative in session. We're gonna use the gym. We're gonna allow for, uh, plenty of physical distancing between people. We would anticipate having an area, if people refuse to wear masks, that we would put them in one, um, kind of area away from the rest of the group, um, so that they're able to be there, which is consistent with, um, all the information that's come out from the, um, State Municipal Association. So we, we do anticipate doing the deliberative in the gym at the high school. And we'll work, uh, continue to work closely. I, I have heard some conversation that other towns, um, might be looking at postponing, um, deliberative. This would be something that if the town chose to, um, postpone deliberative, which I don't think they will, I'm not anticipating this, but the school district can be autonomous. So our recommendation, um, irrespective of what the town would do, would be to continue with our deliberative and to hold it, um, in person as planned.
And what's the snow date for it?
Monday.
Monday?
So it, yeah, it's the Saturday and then the Monday.
Yeah, it's January 30th.
That's cor, that's correct.
Right, at 10:00?
Yes.
So the meeting tomorrow is, um, we've requested, um, a meeting, a joint meeting with the town, and we're doing the same thing in New Boston to have our school district moderator, the town moderator, uh, the school district clerk, the town clerk, and supervisors of the checklist, uh, chairs of the school board and the select board. And just to get everyone on the same page, make sure that we're all planning the same thing. And, uh, there's just a lot of logistics for us to work out. So I, I think, uh, we'll be in good shape tomorrow. And, uh, many, uh, many thanks to Denise and Scott for getting that scheduled. And, um, you know, we'll be ready. And the, the board should know there is another alternative. Again, we are not recommending this, but there is a process that you can go through which would allow us to have two public hearings. We have to send a mailing to every registered voter in town and then you can do a drive-through vote. So, uh, a little, a little different, um, but that is another option. But again, at this point, we, we are not recommending that. Scott, anything to add?
Go ahead, Dan.
I, if I may, please don't misinterpret what a drive-through vote is. It means the rail. And if anybody knows how elections are set up, the ballots have to stay inside a perimeter. That perimeter has to be extended through an outside area. So people would vote the same way as they vote when they walk through. They walk through, they go give their name, get a ballot inside the perimeter, vote in the perimeter, drop their ballot in the perimeter. If you do this in a vehicle, you would drive into the perimeter, get your ballot, mark it and deposit it into an, all, another ballot box and then drive away. So don't people think this is like something that you're just gonna go in a parking lot? It, it has to be well-planned and it has to be a perimeter and ballots can't leave that sectioned-off area.
Thank you, Dan. No, that's, um, thank you for explaining that. All right, so, um, we need to, oh, go ahead, Jenny. Sorry, I didn't see your hand.
Will there be plexiglass or something, um, dividing the masks?
Uh, yeah, so Jenny
Unmask.
Jenny, Ra, I, I, let me say this, that I've had discussions with Brian and some others and there are other alternatives rather than having people in the same room. Okay? So one of the options is to put people in the adjacent room, such as the senior calf with a Promethean boards and there has to be an assistant moderator in there if there's a vote taken, et cetera. But, um, that, that, that's another option and kind of having like a modified Zoom type situation. So there are, there are, there's a few different scenarios that we have to talk to the moderator about and the town officials, and that's one of them. That they would be in a separate Yes.
But, uh, Jenny, al- also, when you think about, you know, um, as Mr. Cludier shared, people going up and, um, you know, uh, checking in with the supervisors of the checklist, all of those people will be behind plexiglass. There'll be, um, sufficient safety measures for all of those people. And then Scott's right. So for the so-called maskless section, um, we can put that into another room if we felt that that's appropriate to do. So
Cause I'm just thinking there could be a fair amount of maskless, um, people.
Typically, we, over the last several years, we, we've had less than 100 people, including school board members and budget committee members at the deliberative session. So if it happens, I don't think the numbers would be that significant that we couldn't do it in a, in the adjacent room and make it work. But again, that's what we have to talk tomorrow about with all the powers that be, you know, making sure. I think technologically it's doable with, uh, with, uh, webcams and, and a Promethean board, very doable. Uh, just a matter of, you know, talking through to the other election, elect, these are the election officials that, that have to approve it.
Right. Just the nurse and me that's concerned.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and Jenny, when we did, when, when the town did the general election in November, they did not choose to have a, um, section for people who weren't able to or weren't willing to wear masks. So they were just kind of mixed in the general public. And, um, our recommendation would be to have a separate area, which, um, we're allowed to do by the guidance that's come out from the state and from the municipal association. So, uh, New Boston actually did that. So at their vote, any voters who, uh, weren't able or willing to wear masks, they were checked in to a different area and they actually voted in New Boston. They were outdoors. Um, we wouldn't think that they'd be outdoors in November, but, um, tho, those are some of the options.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Jenny, you're all set? Okay. All right. So we need to, um, make motions for each warrant article in March. Um, so we'll start with, uh, Article Two. We don't need to do One?
Article One of the election of officers.
Right, yeah, I just don't see it on my screen. That's why
Yeah, you don't, yeah, you don't have to. I mean, it's, it's here, but you have to make a motion to, to recommend, um, on Articles Two and Three.
Money articles.
Those are the money articles. And, and I, and I, be, before we do that, I just wanted to say thank you to Jared as the school board budget rep. Uh, he did a great job this year and, um,
Agreed.
Went to, and I know Ellen filled in for a few and, and others. So, uh, but, but Jared did a lot of the, a lot of the meeting attendance did a really fine job.
Thank you, Jared. Thank you, Scott. All right. So we need a motion to
Hi, well, I'll, I'll make a motion that we vote to recommend Article Two.
All right, I have a motion by Dan. Do I have a second? Say your name, because I can't see you. Jenny is, are you waving your hand? All right. So Jenny is seconding. So I'm gonna do a roll call. Rheta?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, we're in. So now the third warrant article.
Do we need to actually do a recommendation for Article Number Three as we had done one before, one to the Budget Committee? And that number has not changed.
It's, it's irrelevant. Every money article for every year that is on a warrant needs to have either a recommend or to not recommend.
Yes, and we
By both bodies, each body.
I thought we had done that vote to recommend.
We did. We did.
Which was recorded last year.
Oh, oh, for this, this warrant article?
Yes.
I don't believe we, we recommended sending it to the Budget Committee. I don't remember recommending the actual approval where the Budget Committee came back. I, I, I get where you're coming.
Yeah, I, I thought we, I thought we had done it. If, if there's any question that we might not have, that's fine, let's go ahead and do it again.
Right, we'll just do it again. So I need a motion for Article Three.
I'll make a motion that we recommend Article Three.
Thank you, Dan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Is that Rheta?
Yes.
Alright, I'll do roll call. Rheta?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Jared?
No.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So we have eight yeses and one no.
Was it important for Jared to indicate why he was not in the majority? Only if you want to, bud.
Yeah.
No, I, I appreciate it, Dan, and I think that I've mentioned it many times on prior calls. So I, I think that everybody knows that we could just look in the minutes and
Just, just three, three little words, three little words you object to on a sign fun balance?
There you go.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, so now we need to talk about who's gonna speak to each warrant article at deliberative on January thirtieth. So from the past, usually the chair does the beginning part of the budget and then Scott, you do the nuts and bolts of the budget, is that correct?
That's how we've done it the last couple of years. It's been kinda like a tag team approach, you know?
So I'm up for doing that. So we do need someone to speak on CRF. Dan, you've done it before, but I'm not sure you'll be at.
I, because of what is going to be happening over the next several weeks, I won't be going in public.
That's fine, I completely understand. So who would like to speak to the CRF warrant article?
I know that I did it last year, Heather, I'll be happy to do it again for the board this year.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that. Is everybody else okay with that? Have Jared talked to Article Three?
Madam Chair, we would also want to identify who's gonna move.
Okay, yep.
So we're gonna need the move, the second, and then the speak to.
Okay, so with arti- we're talking just Article Two and Three, so who will move Article Two?
I'm, Ms. Chair, I'm happy this Jared to move Article Two.
Okay, so you will move Article Two and who will second Article Two? Ellen is raising her hand, so Ellen will second Article Two. Alright, so now I need Article Three. Who would like to move Article Three?
You're not raising your hand, Jared? Oh, come on.
Well, he's doing Article Two.
Oh, that's why, I got it, I got it.
I'm speaking to it, so I don't think it would be great to move it and then speak to it.
Right, so Ellen is raising her hand, so she'll move Article Three. And I need someone to second it. Jenny will second Article Three.
Denise, it was Ellen was gonna move Article Three and Jenny was gonna second it.
Okay. And then I know Rheta is gonna talk on the awards. Was that why you raised your hand?
No, I have a question, just going back to Jared and I'm, I, I'm, I, I guess I'm wondering why Jared's presenting, he's reserved about it. I mean, it, it, it's great, I'm, I'm happy that he's doing that, but I'm is that an awkward position, Jared?
No, because that's the will of the board. And if anybody's followed the Budget Committee, I follow the will of the board in any of my voting or my articulation of items versus my personal opinions of them.
And you probably voted no on it last year and you presented it last year, so.
Correct, I did vote no last year and still voted again. But again, if, if people are uncomfortable, I completely understand, I don't take it personally.
But you, you're really not against the concept of the CRF, it's the method of funding it, that's the difference, I think.
Yep.
Alright. I, and I, if I can just say, I'm, I'm not uncomfortable with it, it just, it was, it seemed odd.
No, I know, it, it doesn't seem, it should be that way, Rheta, I agree, but as our superintendent and our business administrator know, I go to bat for us when I'm in the jungle with others, if you will.
Right, thank you, Jared. Did I miss anything, Brian, Scott?
Nope, that was everything.
Good.
How are you gonna, how are you gonna present the awards?
Yeah.
So the, oh, actually Rheta and I spoke today about this. Where even though it's a, a little tight to get everything done, we do think we're gonna be able to do two videos, one for each award. They probably won't be the same kind of edited, polished, you know, multiple people kind of approach, but it'll still capture the spirit of the awards and I think that we'll still be able to, to do a nice recognition, so we'll have those done. And if needed, Rheta always does a nice job to, to speak to the awards if we, if we need to do that, but I already sucked her in, she's gonna do part of the video, so we'll, we'll have her, we'll have her do that just the same.
And, and if I could just add, Brian, with the nomination forms, there were really some nice write-ups. So I think even having some of the quotes from that would really add to, to the videos as well.
Yeah, and we're excited, I think it's a nice recognitions, as they always are.
Yes, absolutely.
Will, will there be an opportunity for the general public to be able to either watch a, a stream or participate if they so desire?
The answer to that would be yes on watching, no on participating.
Okay.
Be- because to participate generally requires you to be checked in by the voter checklist folks. And then, and potentially taking votes and it's, I think that would be the challenge.
Well, we won't be taking votes, oh, yes, we will, this is deliberate.
If there was an amendment to, yeah.
Dan, are you asking that as a board member?
Yeah, I was kinda asking it as, as a two, two, a two-four.
So, one of the things that I'm gonna propose tomorrow, Dan, when we speak, is to have a Zoom type setup where I would put webcams, one on the podium, one into the audience, and then another webcam in another room for the folks that might not be wearing masks. And then, you know, presumably if you wanted to be on that Zoom call yourself, so there'd only be a, a select group of people on the Zoom call.
So we could, we could, we could get Dan and we could get Janelle, we could, we could get you guys on.
Exactly, so we can, we can have board members who are, who are there. I don't I have to check, but I, I don't think, I think your physical presence is required for an actual vote.
Yeah, it's good because it's, yeah.
Correct, so you would not be able to vote, but you would be able to participate as a board member, just simply not be able to vote if there was any vote taken.
Sure, and I don't, I don't believe I would be doing any talking anyway.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. So we're done with new business.
Did we go through how the awards are gonna be done and when? Usually that's at the very beginning, right?
Right, yeah, it's usually Brian and Rheta are working on that.
Oh, okay, okay.
Before we get into the budget, we do that after the, I guess, no dancing this year.
There's no dancing and no singing, although we did, MC said that she would be doing something. Interpretive dance for COVID contact tracing or something?
You're, you're a brave man, Mr. Gross.
I know she watches these meetings, so I'm trying to get a text.
Alright, so moving on to board authorization request. I need a board motion is needed to grant continued authorization to the superintendent under the superintendent's emergency operations plan for COVID nineteen as a temporary regulation to policy EBCF pandemic epidemic emergencies and to grant the superintendent or his designee authorization to respond at his or her discretion to changing public health circumstances and to allow the superintendent the ability to modify or adapt school policy as needed until the next successful school board meeting.
So moved.
By Ellen, do I have a second?
I'll second, this is Tim.
Tim, thank you, Tim. I'll do a roll call, Rheta?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle? Jenny?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, we're unanimous. The next is a motion to grant the business administrator authorization to make payments out of sequence and to notify the board of such payments at the next scheduled school board meeting.
I'll make the motion after changing the word scheduled to successful.
Okay, we can I, that's fine, if everybody's okay with that, the same as the other one.
Second.
Alright, so I have a second. By Ellen, motion by Dan, I will do a roll call. Rheta?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So next is school staffing.
Mr. Gross, are you able to share the staffing sheet?
Yes, I am.
So we have a number of notifications that we'll start with, these are track changes. So congratulations to Lindsay Wigan, Ashley Barisi, Jess Brown, Megan Clickner, Caitlin Engine, and John Webb, and we've sent all of them a congratulatory message. For your approval, we have Connor Hager will be in a one-year physical science position. This was a position I had shared with the board that we were finding ourselves short-staffed in the area of science. We've also had some shortages in the area of social studies, but thus far, Mrs. McCann has been able to come up with some, some solutions. So that would be for your approval.
Brian, quick question before we do that. I know he, Connor is the remote only tutor, he does a lot of time during the week with students, will he have time to do both or will he have support for tutoring?
I believe we're looking at another person to replace him in that role.
Oh, okay, alright, but you'll have somebody
Yes.
Still in that role, cause I know that's been a huge asset to the remote students.
Yes.
Alright, so why don't we do the him first, so I'll take a motion to approve Connor Hager.
So moved.
By Ellen, do I have a second? I can't see everybody. Okay, oh, thank you, Scott. Alright, so I had a motion by Ellen, second by Rheta, I will do roll call, Rheta?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, we're unanimous.
So next we have, we have three sports nominations, one is a volunteer. This is Chad Detchin as a volunteer, and then we have two new coaches, Damian Milas and Caitlin Allen, and both of these were kind of last-minute hires for us. We didn't actually think we were going to be able to have a girls' or a boys' B-team at Mountain View, but as always, we've had great parents that have stepped forward. So we would be bringing those three for your nomination, please.
Alright, I need a motion for
So moved.
By Ellen to approve the co-curricular nominations. Do I have a second?
Second, Jenny.
By Jenny. I'll do roll call, Rheta?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle? Jenny?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, we're unanimous.
And lastly, consistent with conversations that we, we've had at the last school board meeting, these are a number of unpaid leaves, so you authorized me to approve these on your behalf and then just to bring the notification forward. So this round, we have four of them. As you'll see, these have already been approved, so this would just be a notification. And this, these are people that were being were under leave for the Family First Coronavirus, the FF-CRA. So now that that's ended at the end of the calendar year, these have shifted to unpaid leave for these folks. So that would just be notification only.
Brian, can you just tell me, what does E O Y stand for?
End of Year.
End of Year, thank you, that makes sense. Alright, so is that it for staffing?
Yes.
Jenny, did you have a question?
So all those positions are being covered? Um, Brian?
Those positions are examples of ones that do count when I show that graph, Jenny. So if we're not able to find somebody, those would be part of that difference between that gray line and that orange line, so every time we have someone who's out on leave for whatever reason, it continues to create hardships for us to be able to cover our needed positions.
Okay, so nobody's filling those positions?
We're, we're, we're doing the best we can, but really, all, all school districts are, are struggling with, with finding and keeping and retaining substitutes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Jenny, thank you, Brian. So there is no non-public tonight, other business, just a few things. We have to do our board picture. Right?
You wanna take a picture of the screen?
You have to let us smile, though, Scott.
For the town report, we need to do a picture.
You know, it's, it's funny that you say that, but Dan, but that would be super appropriate. You know?
You gotta give some of them, I mean, I, I would put a collar on my shirt rather than I mean, this is the first time I, I projected my image all year.
Great to see you.
And, and likewise, so, I mean, I'm feeling good for the moment, so.
Do you, my question is, do you honestly want me to do that? I can certainly turn my camera off, Brian can hurt, turn his off. And perhaps Tim can turn his on. We can, I can just do a screenshot.
Can I make a recommendation? With Caleb, if you can turn your camera so it's not pointing at your light, your face will look a little better?
Yeah.
Let me go put on a quarter zip, I'm wearing a t-shirt right now, one second. It wouldn't take me that long to change if you, if, if, if this is what we're gonna do, cause Scott is actually gonna say, is this what we wanna do? When is, when is the last date we need to do this, Scotty?
You'd have to, you'd have to do it. He needs it by the end of the month, so you'd have another, well, no.
Well, this is, this is it.
This would be it, yeah, this is it.
So this is COVID picture?
I look terrible right now, I've been like stick at home with COVID, so.
Well, you have a picture of you.
Okay, alright, good.
That's, that's fine.
Alright, while we're waiting for, for Mr. Cludier, we need to know Jared, what are you wearing?
This is my Snuggie, so this is my how to keep warm when I'm on those phone calls at seven in the morning with my team, so I thought it would be appropriate. I can go put on the Darth Vader mask too and, you know.
Oh, my gosh. Alright, so Scott and Brian?
Alright, so we're, we're going off.
Turn your camera off real quick and then everybody smile.
Hold on a second, how am I gonna do that? Hold on. How the heck am I gonna do it? One second, alright, hold on.
We're all just smiling.
Are we missing it? No, oh, no, we're not missing anybody.
No. No, everybody's here.
Just bear with me, cause I have to, I have to figure out how to get rid of my picture.
Scott, we've only been using this technology for a year.
Scott, Scott, what if we did this?
What?
We're going to be adjourning right after, what, what we could do is you could adjourn the meeting and Scott can make Jared the host.
Yeah.
And then Denise, Adam, Scott and I will, will get off the call, so you only have board members on.
That's a good idea.
Yep, and Caleb, you stay on too.
Yeah, Ca- Caleb stays and Denise, Adam, Scott and I will, will dip out.
And then, I assume a few of you, Rheta, others can take a screenshot, you know how to do that?
Yeah, I, I just took one. You can also Photoshop, you can just cut people, somebody can take these images. Don't worry about it, it's just getting Don't worry about it, it's just getting the image and you can doctor it up afterwards.
I think it'd be really cool with the Brady Bunch type thing, so although.
No, you can move the squares around, I'm telling you.
Yeah. So before we adjourn, there's a few things, just wanna remind everybody, January thirtieth deliberative, we start at ten, so be there a little before. Um our next board meeting is Monday, February first at seven and we will be back at the high school. So tonight was just because of our guest. Um is there anything else?
Move to adjourn?
Uh, Tim?
Thank you, Heather, um so, I'm sorry, I didn't know how to, how to segue that, um.
No, that's okay, well, that's why I was waiting, that's why I just called your name.
Appreciate it. Um so I just wanted to make an announcement here, um today, it's official, we have a for sale sign in front of our home. Um it has been an honor serving with all of you and I have enjoyed being a part of this community. My intent is to serve as long as I can, um at which point I'll be offering my resignation, I know we truly have a few meetings left for the last year. Um so I just wanted to make that announcement tonight, I spoke to Heather about that and just wanna say, you know, I've I've been part of the board for two years and I have truly enjoyed my time here and it's a lovely community, we love Goffstown, but it's a uh family decision to move closer to to family, and that's what it's ultimately come down to for us.
Right, which is awesome, and just to clarify, um he won't be run in in March, will need to add his one-year term uh to finish his last year, so.
No, we can't, we cannot add his name.
No, 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 not him, no, no, his spot.
His vacancy.
He's resigning before March.
No, 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 it's not before March, it's before um the uh the signup day, which I think is going on like next week.
It starts the twenty, uh this.
The twentieth through the twenty-nine. Right, it's like Wednesday this week to Friday next week. In order, now, he would have to resign tonight for him, his spot to be on a ballot. Otherwise than that, we do the same thing that we just did with Terry. We wait, we let him serve out what he wants to serve and when he needs to go, we would go through the same process and fill his spot until the March elections of twenty-two.
I think that was from the conversation Heather and I had, Dan.
Okay.
Yeah, we 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 could appoint someone. Yeah, so that you would get as much as possible, but the way houses are selling, you might get an offer tomorrow.
Yeah.
We have uh four, we, the sign's been out there for three hours and we have four showings booked.
Yeah, see, it's 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 crazy, i- it is crazy.
So I guess, Tim, then you'll need to make that decision if you wanna resign tonight or uh wait until after, you know, March or whatever.
Yep.
Just let us know.
Absolutely.
And we'll definitely gonna miss having you on our board, you've been a great asset the last couple of years, it's been great working with you.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Yes, good luck, so exciting.
Thank you.
All right, is there anything else before we adjourn? No, all right, so I'll entertain.
Move to adjourn?
By Ellen, and do I have a second?
Second, by Dan.
By Dan, I will do roll call, Retta?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, so we are adjourned, so board members stay so we can take a picture.
Okay, bye everyone.
Good night, Brian.
Thank you.
Would you like me to drop Heather, would that be appropriate?
This is for the past year.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, who's taking the picture?
Um, hold on one second, I can do that, I'm gonna take my headset off, so.
Yeah, we're gonna.